You having to do minutes tonight? I didn't have an email.
Okay, thank you, Dan. I'd like to call our meeting to order, Shaftesbury Select Board. Sorry, we are late, folks. We actually began at 6:00 with a budget workshop. We first had Chief Joe Vatican in, who was presenting the first draft of the fire department's budget, and Oliver Durand, our fire warden, just presented his thoughts on the draft for the fire warden's budget. And we have Jerry Madison here, who's our emergency management director, and Jerry will present his budget and enlighten us in terms of emergency management in town. And I know I have a question about one item.
You want to start there?
Pardon?
You want to start there?
Sure, sure, I'm happy to. I just, I wondered where we stood with the emergency generator. The, just to refresh everyone's memory, we were, through Jerry's efforts and the school's efforts, we were the recipients, for $1, I think, of a generator that was worth, I forget how much, $30,000?
Probably more than that.
$50,000. The catch was that we had to fund having it installed over at the school, because the school has been designated as our emergency shelter. So, there had been a sense that we could, that the town and the school would split the cost, or that we could hopefully get a grant that would cover a certain amount of what was an estimated $30,000, as I remember, installation fee, for the hookups and that sort of thing. Now, last year, the school, when we were budgeting, the school felt that they were unable to foot their half of the bill. So, the town, we said, okay, well, we'll fund our half for $15,000, and maybe we turn this into a two-year process, where next year, the other $15,000 will come in, and then it can be hooked up and ready to go. We did have a memorandum of understandings, Carl, you might remember that, with the school, that had, and I forget all of the details, Larry, you might remember, Jerry, maybe you'll remember, but it had to do with the, you know, I think that the school would pay for the fuel usage to keep the thing running if it ever had to be used, and that we would help with some of the maintenance costs.
So, that was done?
Because they were yearly maintenance costs.
Questions I asked for you, I didn't know if that ever got done.
Yeah. But I'm not sure, you know, we're now at the second year, and, you know, I don't know what the school's plan is, if they're planning to fund the $15,000. Obviously, the town is at a point with a new town garage that we're looking at our own needs here, and $15,000 is a lot to, for us to fund the second half of it. So, anyway, that was my question, where that whole issue stood.
I don't think Ken was here, maybe Mitch, Tim. Faces are always changing here, it seems like. We did take the generator last spring, or last fall. We had it installed on a concrete pad, donate labor, donate materials, the underground pipe from the school out to it. So, it's set there, it's all ready to go, other than the voltage on it was the voltage for the middle school. So, we had to have the voltage changed to the voltage coming into our school, which was done about a month ago. So, that's set, ready to run. They did a yearly maintenance on it, which is going to run about $800 a year to maintain it. That's changed filters, oil, and that type of thing. In doing that, the fuel lines on it, because it sits along, were plugged, so they're going to have to replace the fuel lines on it, which is scheduled to happen next week or the week after. Then it'll be operational, other than the wiring side of the system. So, the hardware will be there, but we're going to need the transfer switch and the wiring.
You mean the wiring to hook things up to it?
Correct. Wiring from the generator itself into the building through a transfer switch, and then to whatever it's going to power up in the building.
Through the conduit?
Correct. Yep. The way I presented this, when this all came to be, was I thought it'd be about $30,000 to hook up the whole complete system. As for 15 last year, for two reasons. One, to get the project started. Two is VM, Vermont Emergency Management, usually comes out with a grant in the spring, sometime around March. We need matching funds for that grant, it's a 50-50 grant. We did one for the firehouse, got a generator for up there, and I think the one down here was the same way. That grant never came to be, through sequesters or whatever have you with the feds, it didn't trickle down to the states, the states didn't trickle it down to us. We had the matching funds there for it. So, I've used a little bit of that to get, keep the project going. So, at least it'll be operational right now, if we had it and it was running, we had an event, if we had to run wire around the building and in, or something like that, we could to power it up, worst-case scenario.
I'm asking, extension cord?
Basically, a three-phase.
Temporary wiring?
But yeah, temporary wiring around into the main, and we could power the building up that way if we had to. There's going to be an extended event for a week or two weeks, an ice storm, something like that.
That'll run the whole school?
They reduce.
All but the kitchen, all but, a lot of electric in the kitchen. It'll run the whole school, your heating systems, your pumps, they have pumps for the septic, it'll run those.
Page 52.
I had Jim seek or, and Pete only come in and look and see where the best place to put the transfer switch was, about three weeks ago, and so that I could have Jim start working up a bid request, so we could put it out to bid the wiring and the transfer Because the grant never came out, my question, I guess, to the board was, is I'd like to ask for another 15 this year to finish the project. Now, how this works, it could be done a bunch of different ways, and you guys might have some other ideas. Whether to buy, what we could buy, what's remaining in the budget this year, the transfer switch, these are all, not hard numbers, just estimates, but probably $12,000 just for the hardware for the transfer switch. It's probably going to be another 12 or 15 to wire it. So, that's why I came up with 30 for a cost. We could buy what we could this year, and then wait till we get into next year's budget, and do what we can then. We could string this out to a three- or four-year project. Or, we could time it so that we put it out to bid and did it toward the end of this budget, right next to the beginning of the next budget. So, if I had what was left in this budget, spent it right at the end, had the work done right at the transition, was it July-June, and then had the other 15 to cover that, it'd make the bid process, I think, simpler, because somebody would bid on the whole job. Or, we could just bid the material out and see if we could, you know, get in-kind donations on labor to install it. I don't know how well that would go, because you're going to be a licensed electrician, it's going to have to be state inspected, that type of thing. So, looking for a little guidance there, from you guys on that, what you'd like to see done.
Can I?
I know, like, to address Karen's issue with money, I mean, it's obviously a tight year for that. You've got some other projects there.
Well, it is, and I guess it, to my mind, again, it brings back, you know, I know the school was very, it was, you know, this came to us after the fact. In other words, I mean, it's a wonderful thing to have a $50,000 generator, but had, you know, this Select Board, frankly, never had an opportunity to even weigh in on what happens if we get it, because what happened was, we got it for a dollar.
Well, I think if you-
And then it was presented that the school had really worked very hard to get this.
If you remember back-
We're kind of stuck with the bill.
The discussions that happened before, when it was in Bennington, was, I think, Ben, we were going to take it, then Bennington wanted it.
Right.
And then Bennington looked at the hookup cost, you know, their numbers were huge.
Can I go back to square one, though?
Sure.
Because, I mean, we're on camera, the town is watching, and we're talking about substantial amount of money for this town. Can you confirm my recollection that one of the reasons why we wanted, this is beneficial to the town, as opposed to be nice to turn on the electricity if power goes out?
Right.
I seem to recall that after Irene, the Red Cross came in and offered up some grants to provide bedding, cots, emergency relocation areas for Shaftesbury. But, before you could, before they would provide that material, we had to have a shelter that was up to the par, whatever that par was, for the Red Cross. And it was my understanding, I believe, that this generator went a long way to meeting that standard for the Red Cross, so we would have a formal shelter, that we could get these, this funding and these, this material, in case we had, God forbid, a huge disaster.
You got bits and pieces there.
Good, so clarify for the town, because we're talking about a lot of money, and who's going to pay for it, why we have it, let them understand what we're, why we even want this generator.
In our rapid response plan, I'll go back to that, because that's what we're going to go to. Since I've been the emergency management director, we've had four shelters, the church, both firehouses, and the school. We can still have the schools as a shelter, doesn't have to have a generator. We can rent a generator, bring a generator in, just from, the thing you've got to remember in that scenario is that the whole, if we're faced with it, probably the whole state's faced with it, just like Irene, a great example. Can you imagine the phone ringing upstate of people wanting to rent generators?
Yeah.
Where is Shaftesbury going to be on that list? Could be first, could be last, don't know. So, there's advantages to having a generator in each one of our shelters. The firehouse has one, both firehouses have generators, the church does not, and the school does not. So, this is another piece of the puzzle to add a generator to that one. For the Red Cross to come in, it doesn't have to have a generator. So, if it has a generator, obviously, it's to its advantage, especially in the winter time, you need heat, you have to bring in some kind of outside source. The Red Cross Shelter Initiative is what that was called. They provided, it was about $3,500 of materials, blankets, cots, and pillows, for, I think, 15 or 20 people. And the Red Cross learned from Irene, in the sense, trying to get at least small amounts to each little community, some of the roads were cut off, they couldn't get there. So, what they're trying to do is at least get some things in each community throughout the state already in place, so they don't have to get those things there in an event. So, that's what the Red Cross, the Shelter Initiative was. Doing that, you have to do a shelter survey, which we do every year, it's on file, what we have, handicap access, parking, the structure, what it's made out of, brick, the roof, all that stuff, that's done every year, and it's kept on file at the Red Cross. So, when they come, they know what kind of building they're going into. If, as a kitchen, how many bathrooms are there, handicap accessible, all that type of thing. So, the Shelter Initiative's a little bit separate from the generator, in a sense, that we can still get those materials. Part of that Shelter Initiative was to have at least, I think it was a minimum of 10 volunteers trained in shelter operations, how to open a shelter, how to run a shelter, how to close a shelter, that type of thing.
Jerry, didn't we need space to store this stuff, too, though?
We, in the Red Cross thing, yeah, we thought maybe a trailer-
We didn't know where to put it.
And then, where do we put it? The school might have some space, they thought they might have some space, to the firehouses. We haven't quite got all the way through that part yet with the Shelter Initiative, that's kind of one project over here, on one side, and the generator's something else.
Well, I thought the generator played him, because as you said, they do a survey and see if you had bathrooms and facilities-
It does, it does.
And if you, and if you just said, if we don't have a generator-
Yep.
-we're not going to have bathrooms and facilities operational-
Right.
-at the school.
Correct.
So, it is in a way related.
So, they kind of go hand, oh yeah, they go hand in hand, it's just, I want to make sure that, you know, they're two separate projects, and they're not kind of tied together. When you said grant, there was no grant for generators from the Red Cross.
I knew that, yeah.
Okay, all right, it's just for that.
I thought it was, I thought it permitted us to use that facility-
For sure.
-in a way that would allow us to get the benefits that were being offered by the Red Cross to communities-
Yep.
-that would, that would come part of the way to-
Some people mentioned to me, with Irene, we did evacuate some areas in town, and there was a shelter setup, there was the middle school. That's Bennington's Mass Care Shelter, that's where the generator came from. When they went to a Mass Care Shelter, it wasn't big enough, so they upgraded the generator to handle what the state, or what the feds-
Correct.
...wanted there. Some of our residents went to the middle school. Now, that's not to say that that couldn't happen again, but then again, if it's a big event, it's kind of nice to have the Shaftesbury people in Shaftesbury. It's not always going to be, broom, maybe, in Bennington.
And you don't know what other shelters may be, handicapped, destroyed, impacted, inaccessible?
Exactly, roads cut off, accessible, that type of thing. So, to have it here, I mean, a generator is kind of the final thing for a great shelter here, it's a school.
Can I ask, Larry, you're here as a school board member, or just as an interested, but you are a school board member, so, do you have any idea how it works in other towns? Is there a sharing of some of the cost between the school system, MAU system, and the town for these kinds of-
The only one we need a little bit is Powell, and Powell has an arrangement similar to ours, where the town has the responsibility, but the generator's at the school. And I'm not sure of the actual agreement.
In terms of the initial setup costs, was there a sharing that you're aware of?
They got a grant to the state, the generator grant to install that generator, so it was a 50-50 match.
And that, I think, is what Jerry was attempting to bring in, to allow us to do the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, that's what the match was, the 15, if it was going to cost 30, had the grant been available, we'd be keeping receipts and getting reimbursed, and it would have cost us 15 for a $30,000 project.
Right.
The powers that be upstate, the powers that be at the federal level, that money's not trickling down like it used to, or like it did. So, that's not there. My backup plan was, then we'd kind of pick pieces and try and do the best we can, and complete the project. My fear is that we have something like that sitting there, and something happens, another Irene, an ice storm this winter-
Right.
-and everybody's pointing the finger at you and me, we have a generator, how come we don't have a shelter with heat? The generator's sitting there, why isn't it hooked up? I don't really want to be in that position. So, I, maybe it's a three-year project, maybe it's a two-year project, you know, it's, that's kind of what I'm faced with. Trying to make it happen the best way we can, that's affordable and it's doable.
Have you gotten bids yet on all, I mean, I know you're estimating a lot of this-
No, Jim is writing up the bid request, or bid proposal, or whatever, for that.
Well, that's good of him, thank you, Jim.
On that, so he's doing that, and whether we, you know, what I'm looking for is, what are your thoughts? Should we bid out the materials, bid it out now, try and do what we can now, or wait till the one budget year is ending and a new one's beginning, and try and complete the project all at once? Or would you rather go out, extend it out farther? Now, that's saying that, we're going to go through another spring, there might be a generator grant available, I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball, so, you know, I get on the phone upstate, and I try to get, they don't really know until it, until it's ready to come out, what they have for money, so.
Is the estimate going to be less than the $15,000 that we're short right now, do you think? I mean, do we know that?
Well, I was guessing 30 for the whole job.
Yeah.
We have a little less than that, a little less than the 15 now, because I've spent some for the yearly maintenance, which is always going to be a recurring budget item.
Well, we did budget 750 as a separate line item for that.
Yeah, Margie and I, I think we went over that, and it's, it was seven something, but we figured 800 to go into the next year, the new year with it.
Next year.
Yep. So, that should stay about the same. It could be a little less. Talking with Jim, he thought that was a good number, Peter thought it was a pretty good number, for the, you know, 15 probably for the wiring, and at least that for the transfer switch, so.
But one of the, one of the things I'm thinking of, as we're sitting here, is that, I mean, at the end of each budget year, we have this list of, for lack of a better word, donations from the town to various appropriate groups that the town has to vote on, for, which make our community richer, if you will. And as I'm listening to Jerry, I can't think of anything that would be more important to this town than having a parachute, and having that parachute available if, as they say, God forbid, something happens, we do not know. We just saw on the news today what happened to towns in Illinois, and people saying, oh my God, I never, I thought this only happened to other people. And that's true, until it happens to us. So, you know, my thoughts are, this is a very, very significant element of what our town should be able to offer to its residents, and if at the end of each year, we can make donations to those other very useful groups, I think we should do what we can to, to make this available as quickly as possible for our own people.
Something right here in town, for, yeah, exactly.
So, do you think you'll be able to get harder numbers, firmer numbers, with Jim's help?
Yep.
Soon?
Well, that's, you know, I can't see why it couldn't go out for bid now, even if we're not going to do the work until the end of this budget, beginning of next, where we have all the funds available, if the other 15 is allowed into the, into next year's budget.
Well, and again, it's, you know, depending upon what the bids come in at-
There's no reason why we can't get numbers, I don't see why, not at all.
Yep, yep. It's all, makes it a little easier to figure out what we may want to budget.
I mean, it's, it's a good resource, and kind of going back to the school side of things, it's an asset for the school as well.
I know that, I know that, which is why-
I mean, you have a, you have a storm blow through a cold front or something, knocks down the transmission line, or transformer goes out. School could run its daily, daily operations there with no, a little flicker, and it comes right on, and you're running. Wintertime, it's protecting that asset.
Yeah.
Is that a town asset, or is that an asset that sits alone?
That's, that's, that's school. I mean, you know, we are a town, but they have their own unique budget and their own board, and, and again, that was my recollection when we first began this, was that initially, the $15,000 was going to split, be split, and then we'd get a grant for 15-
It's trying to find, you know-
-but the school was in a tough shape, and we said, okay, we'll do the first year fully.
And try and make it work.
Larry?
I don't remember it exactly that way.
Okay.
So, I think that letter is key, that we, I think we agreed, we sent to the Select Board to-
That, yeah, that was, that was for ongoing maintenance.
That agreement would look like.
Right.
And it was acceptable at that point, the, you folks took on the obligation, okay? I don't think you want your school in the day-to-day running of a major piece of equipment like that. We're simply not qualified or capable of doing that. You have to shift that responsibility over to the folks that can, that can handle it when it's appropriate.
Well, I guess I'm just hearing Jerry say that if you have a flicker, the generator's going to come on, school will keep running, so.
Well, I'm saying that in the sense that it's, it's the same thing with the heat, I mean, there's, there's a huge asset there. Power goes out, you keep the heat on in the building, you're not losing. So, it's, it's not only doing something for the community, well, it is, both ways, it's protecting the asset and the people of the community. I think it's a, it's finding a balance there where it works for everybody. You know, if the school is willing to pay for the fuel, it's going to have to run once a week, on test, you know, it'll come up, we'll set it for a day that someone's there, so they hear it run, they watch it switch over, they watch it switch back. Same thing we do with the firehouses, it's usually on a Thursday, our drill night, we hear it kick on and kick off, make sure it's working. So, it's, I think it's a win-win all the way around, especially for what we got the generator for. Now, it's just trying to have, I don't want to, you know, have the ball and just fumble it, or have the ball and just stand here with it.
No, I completely agree with that.
I'd like to kind of keep it going, if it's slow or-
Could that be wired in such a way, Gary, you said that it'll run everything but the kitchen?
Yep.
Could that be wired in such a way that you could maybe turn off half a dozen rooms down here and then run the kitchen?
Load shedding devices, they make those, that's another substantial amount of money for hardware.
Well, yeah, but I mean, if you're going to have something like that, and, all right, so you get a nice storm, you don't get no power for two weeks, like we had in a snowstorm.
That's my biggest fear, yep.
You know, and, and, because the, I've got one of them deals at my house, it's just, I mean, it's a little portable, it's just, but, I can well start that generator, plug it inside the house, I can't run everything, but I can run my furnace-
Exactly.
I can run my refrigerator-
Necessities, yep.
You know, and then you just swap them back and forth.
Right. They make a unit that'll, it's a load shedding device, it'll pick up the whole building, and once it sees it's way too much, you know, you might be 150 KW, and it's a 100 KW generator, it'll start going right down through shedding loads.
Yeah, but I mean, all I'm saying is that-
So, the generator finds a spot to where it can sustain it.
Yeah, if you're going to do that, I, it would be-
Well, I mean, that's, it's, I kind of looked at it like you did, you know, the essentials, the heat, your pumps for your, for your septic, lights, obviously, emergency lights, that stuff has backups anyway, battery backups.
And with your water, you don't need pumps for that.
Nope, that comes right in, so you got circulators for your heat, that type of stuff. Once we get it up, I mean, we've done it, looking at what the loads were from utility bills, to see what the highs are and the lows, to try to get an average of what, what there was there.
Right.
We might be able to run some of the stuff in the kitchen, but I don't think it'll pick up, like, the hood fans, exhaust fans, all the other stuff.
Oh, no, but you're running an emergency-
But whether we can, exactly, whether we can have a warming oven or-
Make some coffee, something like that.
Make some coffee, oh sure, sure, I don't see why it's not going to, not going to be able to do that.
Yeah.
But as far as picking up the whole kitchen circuit, I don't think it'll handle. I mean, having Peter look at it, and Jim look at it, I don't think, I think we all agree.
Well, it's just a thought, it, you know, because if you're going to use it for something like that.
Oh, for sure, for sure. And, I mean, if we went out and inspected a generator for this, you know, $130,000 generator, to go in there to run the whole school, well, you're looking at engineering fees, and here, we have the generator for a dollar, and we thought it would, you know, do, do us good here, especially at the school.
Is that military surplus?
No, no. Originally bought from Milton Katz, a Perkins Diesel, not very old, it's when-
Is it a Diesel?
Yep, yep, Perkins, yep. When the middle school was built, was put in there.
Yeah.
And then when they went to a Mass Care Shelter, it's my understanding that they had to upgrade their generator, because it wouldn't run everything that they wanted it to run there.
Well, that's a lot bigger building, though.
It is, yep.
You wouldn't build a school today without a backup generator, right? I mean, they-
Probably, you probably wouldn't build, yeah, I mean-
There wouldn't be, there wouldn't be one, so.
You get into, I mean, I'm staring at the picture up there on the wall, wondering if there's going to be a backup generator in that building, and what it's going to run. You know, it's, it's not, it's, that's what I do, I, it's planning.
So.
It's all planning.
It's all planning.
It's all looking at that, and it's, okay, and worst-case scenario, it hits, it escalates beyond the fire department, beyond stuff, it comes to me, and then it's, you know, we've got to have a plan.
Tim, did you have a question?
Yeah, I would just want to say that it sounds like we all agree that this is something that should happen. It's a good thing for the town. I would like us not to get bogged down in the, what I see is a technical detail of whether or not the school pays part, or we pay part, or we pay all. We're all, whether we collect, whether we, the town, collect those taxes to pay for it, or the school collects those taxes to pay for it, the same people are paying for it. I think we should focus on getting the job done. It would, I think it would be nice if the school put some skin in the game, for the reasons that Jerry said, that you will benefit when the rest of the town is not, you will benefit from the lights being on when the rest of the town is not using it as an emergency generator. So, I think it would be nice to see that buy-in, but I don't think we should dig in our heels if we don't get that cooperation from them. We're the ones that are responsible for emergency management in the town, we're the ones that are ready to get things done, and if it comes to that, I think we should get things done.
Terry, did you have a comment?
I have a couple questions. So, on a jury, I mean, how do we know when the grants are coming out for this? I never know when my grants are coming out, but they just appear monthly, or?
Usually, it's an email, and I usually get it three different ways, one from the fireside, one from Vermont Emergency Management directly, and then the one that goes out to the town.
So, there's no way to know, like, six months?
Uh, it's, I tried that, and talked with a couple gals up there, and they just don't know. They don't know until it hits their desk.
Well, the second part of this is, how long in a crisis situation would it be to run the extension cord, let's say you get the school up and running, how long would it take?
Well, you're going to need, right now, the way it sits, to try and-
Say we had crisis next week, could you have that up and running in twelve hours?
You're going to have to pull some, some people here in town that are qualified to do it, and it's going to take a minute. Um, and I don't imagine there's an electrician in town that has, you know, three-phase, uh, triple or double-out wire coated that's can run on the ground around to hook it in. So, you're going to have a cost right there. You're going to have to buy wire somewhere. So, it's, it's, you know, an extension.
Same wire we're going to purchase anyway, right?
Yeah, you could do that, you could do that.
So, it's more like you buy the wire and have it on hand?
Yep, you could do that. Um, providing it doesn't damage the wire, you know, if it is out there, laying there and whatnot. But you're going to need the wire anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Larry, Larry hit a question.
One more point that Tim made, uh.
You could.
I think the school put the skin in the game that they were asked to. Uh, we got the generator, uh, we provided the site, we provided the support. Uh, not sure of the fuel line situation, uh, but I know we were committed to run the fuel, a dedicated fuel line from the generator to our fuel tank.
Correct.
So, that issue went away. There would never be a discussion about where the fuel came from, or where it was, uh, how it was paid for. So, I think we're, we're in the game as much as we were asked for, Tim. Um, I don't remember a, a financial commitment beyond that, Karen. And that letter will, will bring that out, I think. I don't think we left that uncovered, but if we did, then we need to address it. If we didn't, then.
I would like to see some type of agreement with the school and with the town, just if, if I get backed over by a truck tomorrow, or any one of us.
Right, right.
You know, the board changes, there's got to be something there. I did talk with Nelson down in Powell, and asked him, because I was going to try and, and copy or use his, their agreement as a, you know, a template to do ours. They didn't have one. And he, looking back, he wished he did. So, I.
We, we, we have one, and it's based on ongoing maintenance. It's, it's based on going forward. And it was Fran who was, who was here at the board meeting.
If we, if we had that in front of us, I think it'll help both of us understand. Uh, one point, I know we're under the impression at school is that that will run our kitchen, okay? Because the heat in the kitchen, stoves or whatever are gas. But the thing that we're interested in observing is refrigeration.
Right.
And we were, we're thinking, we're covered there if that generator's in operation, uh, because that's going to be a major component of, of making sure that people are cared for, is to have.
Well, for sure. For, and you're protecting what, what food you have in the freezer there now, just like you would at your house, yep?
If, if that door is open, if you're saying there's another piece needed there, then, then that's maybe something we should look at.
Well, that, without actually, without actually doing the load test on the generator, it's hard to pick and, I don't want to commit and say it'll run the kitchen. That's why I've been, I don't think it will.
But it's the first time I've heard that it wouldn't, that it was possible.
I don't think it'll run the entire kitchen. I, I, there's things with coffee pot, or maybe a couple of the freezers or refrigerator, to see what the loads are in there. Until we do that, then we'll know for sure what we have.
What I'm saying is, that's a piece I hadn't heard before.
Yep.
I don't think anyone on the board has heard, so.
Okay.
We might need to, you know, have that conversation.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Well, I think it's important, again, you know, it's just a follow-up. I think it's important for you, and you're going to get it. Get the figures.
Right.
So that we know going forward what we're looking at, in terms of, you know, potentially budgeting.
Right.
If it's another fifteen thousand in this new budget year, um, or something less, or something more.
Right.
But I, I think going out with the bids is a good plan at this point.
We'll have some numbers then, and.
Because I don't think we can't count on, and if we, if we end up with a grant, all the better. We're all the better for it, but.
Right.
I think you got our attention.
Well, and, and that's part of the, part of the, putting it out to bid, to get some hard numbers there.
Sure.
And then also to do some load testing, to chase that out a little further, too, to make sure what we're going to run, what we can't run, that type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
From our side, I think I just want to leave it that. We're in this together. I mean, this is a good thing for the town. Uh, we're pleased that you folks are considering, and we'll work together on a, on a good solution.
Okay, great.
The fuel for it would come right off.
I think, I think there's an electrical supply place in Medica, and the name escapes me. But they have, that Phase Street.
There is, yep, there is, yep. Um, used to be Temple, now it's.
Yeah, it's, not my field, so I don't know. But I know there's one down there.
And there's Gray Bar in Rutland, so there's, yeah, they're, they're around. Um, and I mean, that's part of it, too. Maybe I can, uh, approach some of the electrical suppliers and see if, um, you know, there's ways that they do corporate donations or something like that, for something like this, too.
Quick question. You wouldn't be able to load test until you have it all hooked up anyways, right, to determine where, are you going to be able?
The generator to, to meet the sta- the state, um, in a public building, in a school, it's going to have to get load tested each year. That's going to be part of the maintenance package, so it'll get load tested each year. But we can go around and do load tests on each thing in there, circles. I mean, we can put an ammeter and see what it's drawing, and do the mathematic calculations to see what you have, along with the utility bills, too. Um, when Jay and I originally looked at the utility bills, it looked like it was pretty close. Um, I, I just, I don't have enough in front of me to say it'll run the whole building. I mean, I wish I did. Um, it's trying to keep it going, and part of the puzzle is load testing, seeing what we got there and whatnot, and also try to keep the project going as far as, um, getting it done.
Jerry, um, if we can just, you know, there, in terms of the rest of your budget, it's, you know, it's, it's not a lot. But the equipment maintenance is seven fifty, you're proposing eight hundred.
Eight hundred, yep.
Um, travel and meetings, we've got two fifty in there.
Mm-hmm.
Is that?
Uh, travel, meetings, I use it for training, too. Like, we have an ICS class or something like that, I've used it.
Is, is that adequate? I mean, does that, is that covering you? Okay? And then we've got five hundred for the operating supplies. I think that was a file cabinet that you were trying to get a few years ago, that.
And then I was thinking of picking up a portable radio.
Is that still?
Yep. So, we had, we never got a bank of radios for here, that I recall.
Okay, you weren't, we didn't get you one part, as part of that grant. That was all the fire. Okay, okay.
And there was a discussion about doing a bank of radios.
So, is that five hundred going to cover you?
Yeah, yep. I mean, the, the big ticket item, obviously, is a generator.
Yeah.
And there needed to be some discussion on it, to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Yep. Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Jerry? Thank you very much, Jerry.
You're welcome.
And thanks for your input, Larry.
You want this back, Margie? Margie, you want that back?
Thanks.
Okay, um, we're going to move to our regular, um, business meeting at this point. Uh, does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything that's on the agenda?
No.
No.
Um, we have approval of minutes. We have the minutes from November fourth. I noticed a number of things, but why don't we, I'll ask for a motion to approve and a second for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
So, that was Carl and Tim. Um, I thought this was the meeting, I thought we had, I mean, Chris Williams needs to be noted as present. Uh, Bill Penny Baker, I'm pretty sure was here also. Um, I think Jay Palmer was here. And, you know, I guess when, we want to be sure when we have more than a few folks that we send around an attendance sheet. I think that makes it.
Yeah.
A little more helpful for the, uh, minute takers. Um, and let's see, on number five announcements, Karen Mellinger thanked Ian Taylor, I would say the departing Town of Shaftesbury Assistant Water Superintendent. Um, I think Joe would take offense if we, if we had promoted Ian. Um, Ian did a great job, but he wasn't, he wasn't Joe. Um, and down on seven, I think, I was a little confused reading paragraph number three. Um, and I don't know if there's, pardon? Sorry. If, if there's a way of simplifying that, um, you know, just by saying that the, Bill Fisk reported the 2013 fiscal year budget closed out with an excess of, um, uh, revenue over expenditure, or, or, yeah, revenue over expenses of forty-four thousand dollars.
Right.
And just keep it at that. I, I think when you really try to go into detail, it gets a little bit confusing. Um, and likewise, on the last paragraph on that page, too, I, I would probably cut out the last sentence. But Carl, you might take issue with that. I, I just don't know if that reflects.
Which one? I'm sorry, I was trying to pull it up on my.
It's the last paragraph.
Section seven.
Page two.
Yeah.
Is Bill Fisk acknowledged, I think you were saying, you know, when we have surpluses year after year, does it warrant a discussion about the tax rate?
Yes, sir.
And there had been some discussion at that meeting about the fact that we took the surplus and we applied, you know, a, a, a good bit to reserve funds, and, um, and I think Bill did comment that, you know, well, sure, you could lower the tax rate. There are different ways of doing it. But again, I just, it seemed a little confusing to me that. You know, Bill is not going to take it under advisement to lower the tax rate.
No.
So, I guess I would just.
I don't, I don't have, I don't have a problem with, with what's there. Just, um, I recall saying, you know, we, when, and I've said it in, in past years, too, when you have, when you have excess funds at the end of the year, one year, it's one thing, at two years, it becomes a trend, three years, it, it's, it's something that maybe should be considered, so that you're consciously deciding that you want to have that.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, it was kind of left open, too, as I recall, when, when Bill left. So, I, I don't have a problem with what's said there.
Okay.
If you think you, that there's something missing, uh.
Well, again, it just seemed to make reference to the fact that Bill would be the one to determine whether the tax rate would be reduced or not.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't, I.
That was where I read it, so.
I don't take that from this, and I didn't take that from what, from what he said there.
Okay.
But that, but he was conscious of, of that.
Mm-hmm, okay, okay. Um, okay, the, the others, some, I, I would say under nine, Chris Williams. Yep, uh, Chris Williams, the chair, man of the Planning Commission. Um, and then on page four, grand list errors and omissions. Um, this had to do with the green parcel, first paragraph. Um, and I pulled, because it didn't sound quite right, I pulled the listers', um, notation, and that was to change the grand listing rate for the property from a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars to a hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. So, there's a couple of places where that has to be changed in the minutes. It has to be changed in the motion. Uh, the one sixty-three two is right in the motion, but it should be one sixty-nine six. And up above, it should be one sixty-nine six and one sixty-three two. And that.
Grand listers.
Hmm.
Who provided the information to the grand listers? That's an error.
Yeah, right, that's just a little edit, edit. I've been ignoring those. It's more the substantive stuff that I'm. Does anybody else have any corrections on that?
I had submitted one in writing to Margie earlier.
Okay, okay. Did we also, Bob Perry was here also, right? We have to add him to the present list. And Chad was, was Chad at this one? Yeah, Chad Schmidt was there. All right. Um, if no one else has any correction, any other corrections, uh, all those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of November fourth as amended? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, Margie. Okay, thank you. Um, and we have warrants. We have, let's see, check warrant, payroll ten R. This is a Veeamers, in the amount of a hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty cents. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Carl and Mitch. Uh, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous. Um, and then this is the big check warrant, number sixteen, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Uh, motion to approve?
So moved.
Carl, do we have a second?
Second.
Mitch. Um, the larger items, over a thousand dollars, there's quite a few of them. Uh, the board did get all of these in advance to review. Um, we have totaling about thirty-three hundred dollars, no, uh, let's see, sorry, twenty-four hundred dollars, maybe, American Rock Salt. Um, we had some fire company equipment, um, a thousand eighty-one dollars. We've got gravel to William Barney for seventy-three hundred, Blue Cross, seventy-one hundred dollars, the sheriff's thirteen hundred and fifty dollars. Um, we have our, um, cartographic technologies, that's the, I think, working with the listers, right, Larry?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, twenty-one hundred and eighty dollars, that's a lister, um, item, the, mapping?
Mapping, yeah.
Yes, yes. Um, Clean Harbors, that was a big one. That was our hazardous waste day, ten thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. Um, we do get, uh, payment from that, reimbursement from both Stanford and Powell. We also have grant money that helps to offset, uh, quite a bit of that. Um, we have more gravel from Daley's, forty-two hundred dollars. Um, let's see, what else we have? Big ones. We have some site work, professional, uh, actually subcontractor services up on Cider Mill, eleven hundred dollars. Um, oh, and then we had the, um, the bond payments for the water project. Um, and that's reimbursed from the water department. So, there was one for ten thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars. Um, and we had another one for thirty-one hundred dollars. And then we had the October cemetery mowing for two thousand dollars, and Wells Communication for fifteen hundred. That was for, as I remember, some, um, communication. It was a, a minotaur, maybe, for the fire company that's, um, within budget. So, unless anyone has any questions, we have a motion, um, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Who was the motion and the second?
You and Mitch.
That was Carl and Mitch.
Again?
Yep. I'll just send this over. Does anyone need to see the folder, or I'll just, we've got the big ones. All right, does anyone have any announcements?
No.
Tim, Mitch? Wait for Ken. No, I'm just waiting for Ken to.
No.
Give his John Hancock.
No.
Okay. Um, the only announcement I have is that, believe it or not, the holidays are coming. Um, and I have it on good, um, I have a, no, what's the, what's the, well, anyway, I have, I know that Santa and Mrs. Claus are paying a visit to this town on December eighth. So, uh, we are going to have our holiday tree lighting at four o'clock, as usual, on Sunday, December eighth. Um, and we'll be very hopeful that everyone can attend. It's always a lot of fun. The Norchef Lions are helping us out this year. Um, and we look forward to lots of folks being here.
So, December eighth?
December eighth. I'm pretty sure that's for the Sunday.
Two o'clock, four o'clock?
Four o'clock, four o'clock. Um, Margie, is there anything that you, okay. Um, public comments? Anyone have any public comments? Okay. So, Terry, you are up for our road foreman report. Thank you for coming. Um, it's been a, it's been a bit of time since we've seen you. You've been pretty busy.
Seems like you was on yesterday.
Um, and we thought maybe you could just give us a sort of an overview of some of the construction projects that, that you've been working on, sort of the last part of the season, and where you see us going forward.
Start with the longest project, I guess, was Cider Mill. That road is opened. It needs some dress-up work, needs topsoil spread and seeded in the spring, but the row itself is operational and completed. Uh, we need to do a little more ditching up there in the spring. Um, other capital improvements were, um, the swamp area up on West Mountain Road, we fabricated about a thousand feet up there, twelve inches of gravel. Uh, as far as, so far, it came out really well. It's holding really well. Um, another capital improvement was, uh, sorry, um, well, White Creek Road, we started that, we took all the banks off of Bank Street, White Creek Road, whichever you want to call it, uh, for preparing for the blacktop in the spring, all the way down to, um, Landsberg's Veterinary Shop. Um, all the DI's are opened up now, there can be operation. Um, all the DI's are opened up now, they can be operational again, the water can get to them, and, uh...
What is DI?
DI is the drop inlets where the water goes into the grates. There was four of them along the west side of the road down through there, and the ground had been built up about that big, the water couldn't get to the drop inlets. I don't know how many years ago it was put in, but the town paid a lot of money to get them put in, and, uh, they weren't functional. And when the paving, the proposed, uh, budgetary numbers, paver gentleman looked at it, he said, oh, that's obviously got to come off before we can lay new blacktop down, because the water will trap right in the edge of the new blacktop and it'll fill it right up, which is same thing we did on Airport Road, and, so, we, we're preparing that for springtime in case we have a busy spring, we don't have time to do it in the spring. We're about eighty-five percent complete, uh, grading before winter time, uh, for the roads, um, hopefully we get one more day in tomorrow before it freezes up, we can finish up a few more roads we have. Uh, the worst two that I can think of right now, I think Eric Road needs it, uh, we'll be up there first thing in the morning, and part of Old Depot Road needed it. I'm not sure if there's any other ones that have a lot of potholes on them right now, but they seem to be pretty good from right around today. Um, I thought they were pretty, pretty good. The salt, uh, for winter coming up, salt sheds full, uh, all the plows are here, all the spinners are on the trucks. Uh, we're basically waiting to be done with the graders before we build our sand pile up because of, obviously, lack of room in the yard, that's where the graders part. And then we'll start our tree work for West Mountain Road, that was one, another one of our capital improvements, but we usually do that when we can't do any digging or anything else, we do the trees, so, we'll do that as soon as it starts to freeze up, and we'll get up on West Mountain Road and get them, trees taken care of for that capital improvement project.
Is that getting trees back from the road, or getting them out of power lines?
Right by Haynes there, the trees are right on the road, and it's very shadow, shaded area in that area, and for years we've had, uh, complaints by a few of the residents right in there, how close they were, and it's a, it's a, quite a project, there's probably sixty, seventy trees that are virtually right on the road surface, that we're going to take it back about three feet down there, down through there to get sunlight in and clean it up a little bit.
Does that reduce the, the ice buildup?
Ice buildup, and the fact is, like, the, the plows can't get over the edge of the road as of that, if you have a ditch, the, the, the top of the plow actually is out further than the bottom of the plow, it has a spiral effect, so the snow goes out, so if the plow, the top of the plow is actually overhanging in the ditch, the bottom part is on the edge of the road. So if the tree's there, we're about a foot inside of the road, actually, because the tree is so close to the road, it can't get over to the edge. So in winter time, when the, the road's getting narrower, when there's no ditches there to push it back into.
Does anybody have questions for Terry?
Uh, Terry Yannis, there's a H.P. Fairfield LLC. Side dump cylinder.
Yep.
Um, number one, where the heck are these guys?
That's the vendor we bought the, the equipment through for that truck.
Yeah, but where's, where's the, where are they located?
Um, way up northern Vermont, um, it's not right on the top there.
Uh, this just says Boston, Mass., all I can see.
No, no, they're, they're in Vermont, that's our vendor for...
Municipal Supplies LLC. I'm just wondering, you know, I mean, that's a hydraulic cylinder, obviously, right?
Yep, two-way.
Why, why wouldn't you take that down to, say, Morse Repair in Bennington? They do all that stuff.
No, the cylinder was, uh, rusted. It blew all the seals out, because the cylinder all rusted right out.
Yeah, so, I mean, they can still repair that down there.
Okay, I...
I mean, they...
Steve usually repairs them if they can be repaired, I don't, I guess, he usually takes them apart right here.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, that's fine if you can do it, I mean, I'm just wondering, because a lot of my stuff, I take down to Morse Repair.
I have Morse too, a lot, there's, we have receipts all the time from Morse, but usually Steve rebuilds our cylinders if they're not too, too far gone or bad.
Yeah.
I think the seals and the piston itself were as much as the whole unit.
Oh, I don't know, I don't doubt that, I mean, I'm just questioning, why would you, you know, why would you go way the heck up there when you got somebody, as far as I know, right in Bennington is perfectly capable?
Well, we got the whole thing, it, it wasn't like I go down and chuck and say, I need a cylinder for this truck, I call up there, I say, I have truck number three, they look up on the computer, the identification number and everything, and
Yeah.
That's how they, we know we got the exact right part, and, but I don't usually buy cylinders like that unless Steve says, I can't fix that one, it's gone back.
Now, this is, this is a whole cylinder or a repair?
It's every, the whole cylinder, brand-new, it's a side dump.
Alright, alright, because that's just, if it can't be repaired, that's, that's a different...
No, we always put seals in them when we can.
Yeah.
Yep, seal kits, and, we get seal kits right through them people. All our trucks are supplied from them, except for the brand-new one, that's Viking out of, uh, South Burlington.
Yeah. What's the status on that forklift loader?
We haven't pursued it anymore because the track excavator broke, Steve's just about got that back together, and then we have the mower that blew the clutch all apart in it. So we've been working on the two primary things in between doing our other jobs. And then we've been talking about that in our morning meetings, soon as we get the other two back, we're gonna discuss that again, and we think we have a solution to fix it, but until we get the other two vehicles out of the garage, or we can get the trucks into there.
Is, is that been cleared by OSHA to be used?
No, we're going to take a different route to clear it.
Because when I, when I called their information office, they said it's either got to be approved by the manufacturer or a engineer certified to do that. And I was just wondering what the status on that was.
Okay.
I'd just like to say, I've, I've, the, the improvement that you've made on West Mountain Road is, I notice it every time I go by with that, uh, repair down in the swamp area, it really is wonderful. And I'd like to pass on, uh, a number of compliments that I have gotten from people with regard to, uh, the work that's done, and the responsiveness of, of, of you personally, as well as the work crew, so, uh,
Thank you.
I'm only hearing good things about, about your shop.
Thanks.
And I think, honestly, I, I think the cider mill job is remarkable. It, uh, you know, right now, and, and I think you should, it might be helpful to speak a little bit to that, um, you know, it's very wide in terms of what people have been used to. That was an exceedingly narrow, unsafe area, um, and there was a tremendous amount of work that was done just by our crew, um, and, you know, I think the safety improvement is dramatic on that. You know, having said that, I mean, it's, you know, clearly you stated in the beginning, there still is more work to be done in terms of
Cleanup.
Some, some cleanup and, um, you know, sort of designating where the true traveled area should be
Right.
On that road, um, but I do, I do think it's, um...
Get some topsoil up there on the picnic table, we'll be also.
Well, it, you know, it's a road that needed a fix for a very, very long time, and I think it was, um, you know, something that perhaps was, seemed so monumental that it just never got done. Um, so, I am impressed that, you know, through perseverance and some fits and starts, that you guys were able to...
Well, unfortunately, it took us two years to do it, but, like I said, we'd only do it when somebody was free, or we had time in between jobs to do it, and people have to remember, there was never the whole crew up there working
Right.
Unless it was that day where we were trying to finish and open it up, is when the two days we were all there, but otherwise than that, there was only usually one or two people there, working on that section with the bigger equipment, or the dozer, working on that, so it wasn't like we, and we never shut the road down, never, we always kept the road open during the whole process.
Yep, yep. Anybody have any questions for Terry? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, you too. All right, so we've got the sheriff's contract renewal, um, we had, there had just been a
Few issues.
Couple of little changes to it. Do you not have it here?
I printed it out for everybody else, but didn't keep it coming.
Okay, um, well, okay, did everyone see it? It was sent out to all of us, and I think
Yes.
There was just one small change that was made regarding whether either party wished to terminate. And again, for the sake of the audience, we are agreeing to, uh, twenty hours a week going forward as we have now, it does, um, overspend that budget, uh, line item by, I, maybe it's twenty-six hundred dollars, somewhere thereabouts, um, but the board was determined to keep, to keep the same number of hours, um, for the safety of the community, so, um...
If you just make a motion to approve and then...
I think that if, if we can make a motion and perhaps give me authorization to sign, then, um, I think, I think we'll be...
I'll make a motion to approve the sheriff's contract for twenty hours a week through to June 30th, with the changes made from the last meeting.
Second.
Good a second, okay, so, so Mitch and Ken?
Mm-hmm.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's unanimous. All right, Margie, we'll be sure to get that done after the meeting. Okay, so we now have, this is the third reading of our appointment policy, um, and I did notice today that there were some suggestions that actually came through from Tim, so maybe I will turn it over to Mitch and Tim.
What's the...
Did you, did you see Tim's?
No, I did not.
Okay. Okay.
My PC's been on a blip for...
Oh dear, okay.
Okay, uh, let me, uh...
Tim had some edits that were, um...
Substantive.
Actually clarifying edits, but I think that there was some...
Yeah, there was a lot, I made a lot of, of format changes, um, but there were a few things that were substantive.
Uh, you know, the one, one of those changes, I wondered, you put in three years, are all PC and DRB members three years? I don't think that they are.
You can, you can determine the terms.
I think we have some staggered, yeah.
On the website right now, everybody on there is three years, that's why I put that number. I don't know if that's the policy, but, uh, mainly I felt like, uh, that needed to be in here, uh, or some indication of, of what the term is, because, uh, the way that was worded, I, I had trouble following the wording one, but it seemed uh, a lot of words to go through to say we wanted to go to April 1, without saying anything in the appointment policy about how long we appoint people, so, if the answer's not three years, uh...
Well, maybe, maybe it, yeah, because sometimes we've appointed, uh, new people to sort of a, you know, a one-year trial period, if you will. That has happened, um, and maybe they are all three years now, but I think that the, that the expiration of their term is staggered then. Mitch, do you, you're in the DRB, do you know?
I'm done, I was only appointed to the, for this policy, I was only appointed till this year, until March.
For a one-year position?
To finish, they were just finishing the...
Finishing someone else's term?
Well, I would say we need to find out what our policy is about the terms.
There isn't a policy, there is not a policy, because the statute allows the board, the select board discretion.
Well, that's...
So we, we can take any applicant and decide how long we want them to serve?
It says, usually it's three years, but then what, what has happened, Tim, is that if people leave at, let's say, in the middle of a term or whatever, there, and there's a need to make sure terms are staggered properly? Occasionally that, I've seen this happen.
And it's the select board that decides that?
The select board.
So, what you're saying is in B, C, appointments in the C, C bullet, that, uh, we wouldn't serve in further manner that come with the member's term? Where, will, will, uh, serve for what the select board determines to be appropriate? Is that what we're saying?
No, you're always filling to, you're always filling a vacancy for the unexpired term, right.
Okay, that's what it says here.
We are always expilling a vacancy?
That's exactly what you say.
No, I said a PC or DRB member serve a three-year term expiring on April 1 of the designated year unless they are filling a vacancy for an unexpired term.
Oh, shouldn't, you don't need an unless they are filling. All terms would expire in April the same day or time of year.
I mean, right now, we have one planning commission member who's on a two-year term. Well, now, I don't know if she is, that expired 2013. Was Abigail, did we appoint her for another two years or three years? Do you remember, Carl?
No, I do not.
Is it always one, two, or three?
She was reappointed March 18 for a three-year term.
Okay, so, so we do, we have been doing three, unless it sounds as though, unless someone leaves.
And that's in...
And then it's, would be a two-year to fill that.
So, do we want to say that it, a three-year term, or a term of each PC or DRB member expires after three years unless a member is appointed to fill a vacancy for an unexpired term?
What, what, what section are you in in this?
I'm BB right now.
BB.
Procedures, on page three.
Well, for some reason, this thing doesn't look too right on my computer, but, you know, under B, B what?
Yes.
BB.
BB. And, and again, I'm, clarify your, your reason that that's not out there?
Um, the main thing was, like, I was having trouble following the wording on the, the way it was before, the term of each PRC, PC or DB member expires as follows, unless the member is appointed to fill a vacancy for an unexpired term, all PC and DRB terms expire on April 1 of the scheduled expiration year of term at appointment. Though, that's too many words for me.
I'm just seeing in front of me what you, what your modification is.
I think that's why we didn't, I didn't put a specific, I don't know.
Well, it seems, I mean, I seem to recall that when we had this, we talked about this, we were trying to make sure we got the April 1 in there, was the point, and in, including the April 1, it seems like the appointment policy ought to say something about the appointment term. I guess it doesn't have to, but, uh, if it should say...
Couldn't you, couldn't you just simply, uh, you have here, I'm reading, PC and DRB members serve a three-year term expiring on April 1st, right? That, that's your language?
Yeah.
And instead of tying us down to a three-year term, couldn't we just say, using your language, uh, PC and DRB members shall serve a term not exceeding three years, expiring on April 1st?
Well, no, you'd have to say a term to be, uh, determined by the select board, or something like that.
A P, a term...
But that's inherent.
The term, it could be different, obviously, and it expires on April 1st of the scheduled expiration year at appointment. So if I was appointed to a one-year term in 2013, and April 1st, 2014, if I didn't reapply or reappoint, it wouldn't be, or, uh...
Yeah, I'm saying we ought to make some attempt at a definition of scheduled expiration year.
Yeah.
Say that the, the select board, it's at their discretion, or something to that extent, but...
They just try to make sure that the rotations off don't all, aren't lumped, let's say, four going off in one year, to make sure the terms are properly staggered.
Well, that's not, is that, is that the, is that part of an appointment policy, to make sure that you, we stagger terms, is that what we were saying here?
Doesn't have to be.
Well, it, it doesn't have...
I haven't seen that in any other...
No, but it certainly is...
I don't think that needs to be in policy.
Yeah, I, I would, you know, I haven't seen that in other policies.
I have no, I have no problem saying three years. I have no, I have no problem saying three years, that, that it's a three-year term.
Well, if it's not fixed at three years, we shouldn't say three years. We should say, uh, three years or a term, uh, as defined.
But Megan, but, but who is no longer a three-year term? Megan Donkers wasn't, but she is now. We reappointed her in 2013 to a three-year term.
Right.
So every one of the current members are in three-year terms.
Right, but if we sometimes don't appoint three-year terms, we shouldn't write in stone that they're three-year terms.
I agree.
I'm just saying, we ought to say something about how long we appoint people in an appointment policy, and just saying, uh, the scheduled expiration year.
What's it say in the town book? Doesn't it give you the terms in the town book, two, two-year, and they have...
It tells who, who's got what. It's, it's, everybody has a three-year term, with the exception of, not Megan, it was Abigail, it was Abigail, it was two years.
I don't have my, the old language anymore in front of me, unfortunately.
Well, I have it here. I mean, again, we could say, you know, the length of term to be, to be decided at appointment, or something like that.
Serve a term expiring on April 1 of the designated year unless they're filling a vacancy for an unexpired term. The length of the appointment is decided by the select board?
Yeah. I mean, if we want to keep that, uh...
I would say the length of the appointment is decide, is decided by the select board and is usually three years, if that's, if that's what it usually is.
Well, if, if a guy, a person resigns in year two, usually you get appointed for one year to finish out that person's three-year term, so you keep the endings staggered. That way, you don't get into the, everyone coming up at the same date.
Yeah, well, that's in D, where we say, a person filling a vacancy fills the rest of the term.
Mm-hmm, right.
I'm just saying, appointment policy should say something about how, how long the term is.
I'm, I'm still not, not sure why we couldn't just identify for a period not to exceed three years. Shall serve at the discretion of the, of the select board for a term not to exceed three years.
How about, how about...
That, that language, I agree with.
While PC and DRB terms expire on April 1 of the scheduled expiration year of term at appointment, usually three years.
I'm gonna go back to what I just said. Serve at the discretion of the select board for a term not to exceed three years.
Yes.
That's the statute.
And this is BB?
It's, yeah, but that's, yeah, that would work then. Margie has just shown me the municipal regional planning and development. What is this, is this a statute?
Yes.
Statute.
The planning statute.
Forty-three, twenty-three Appointment Term of Vacancy Rules. The length of the term of planning commission members shall be determined by the legislative body of a municipality. Any member may be removed at any time by unanimous vote of the legislative body. So that, that would be in line with the changed language I proposed.
Did you get that language, Mitch?
No, I wanna right-type it in right now.
That, that maybe ought to be a...
So, but I want, I want, what is it, BB we're talking, right?
The B, I think it would read, PC and DRB members serve at the discretion of the select board for a term not to exceed three years. I don't know if you want to leave that, you know, when, expiring on April 1 of the designated year, but, I don't know.
What about the, that being a separate bullet? What, like it is where you just read it?
Right, Barry, I, A, for, then put that as B, PC and DRB serve at discretion of the select board for, usually for a term of three years?
No, for a term not to exceed.
Or a term not to...
Exceed three years.
Three years, now be the new BB.
Yeah.
And C, the term of each...
What are, what are you proposing for C, Tim?
Then C would be something like, PC and DRB members...
PC or DRB.
Terms expire on April 1 of the designated year unless they are for, filling a vacancy for an unexpired term.
Forty-two, unless, if any expires as follows, if a member is appointed to fill a vacancy on an expired term. So, one more time here. The, the term of each PC or DRB members expires on April 1.
Of the des, of, what did you say?
You don't, you just need to say, just...
Oh, okay. Unless, you don't want to add, unless they are filling?
Yeah, we do want to add that.
An unexpired term?
Okay, so, the term of each D, PC or DRB member expires on April 1 unless the member is appointed to fill a vacancy for an unexpired term. And then take off that other bullet underneath.
April 1, I said of the, of the designated year.
I don't, it sounds to me like you're saying that if you're appointed to a vacancy, that your term ends on a different date than April 1. That's not what you mean. All terms expire.
April 1.
April 1.
Yeah, so that, yeah, that, that's, yeah, the term of each PC or...
You don't need the unless they are filling a vacancy.
Right, so PC and DRB members' terms expire on April 1.
Period.
Period.
Yep.
Okay, done.
I, I thought that the residency, um, language was good. I think you were, you know, that we didn't have to have, be quite as wordy around the whole residency issues.
Yeah, and just in terms of standard style sheets, I think, uh, you don't usually create a single bullet.
Right, for, right.
It's, it's contained in, in the upper bullet, and here, we'd actually managed to split it into two extra bullets. Okay, uh, we wanna go on to C. Again, there's, there's style things in here, but, uh, in C, if I can find it now. Now mine's calling it B. B is vacancies, application and interview.
No, C is vacancies, application and interview.
For some reason, mine's decided that it's C. Where did B go? Oh.
I only have four bullets on D now.
On D?
On B.
On B.
B? No, there are, uh, 13 bullets on B now.
What?
What?
No, I only have four.
Okay, let's, we'll, we'll start, I'll go read it. All applicants to the PC and DRB must be a resident of Shasberry. That's A. B is the appointments, all...
Okay, you're, you're not looking at what I have wrote, though, are you?
No.
Okay. Yeah, when I was, what I was saying about that section was, it's titled vacancies, application and interview process.
Right.
And then there are three sections that are vacancies, uh, interviews, and resignations. And so I was thinking, just leave it titled that way, but take out those three sections, because the things are kind of mixed up all through there, and just have 12, 13 points under vacancies, application and interview process.
I thought I broke it up, but I'm open. I mean...
Well, um...
No, I've only got 10. You've got, you've got 13, I've got 10.
Um, I've got a, a word program here that's kind of funny, so, um, maybe I'm...
You've done Roman numerals through 10.
Yeah, I have, that's what we printed out from your latest.
Oh, yes, yes, okay, I see what's happening. So, yeah, the point there is grouping all the...
So you just want me to take the headings, vacancy notices, interview, and the other one out, and just put all those as A, B, C down through?
Yeah, they're actually Roman numerals.
Yeah, we're gonna take that, take out the Roman numerals out.
And then the main substantive thing there is the last one, which is in the section that was called resignations. I think we want to leave that vacancies, 'cause we can have vacancies for reasons of death or dismissal and the same.
But you, your suggestion in taking out the subheadings?
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't see the benefit of that, frankly.
Well, the, the thing that caught my eye was that we had an, an overall title that was vacancies, application, and interviews, and then there was no application section, and the application, uh, part, person seeking appointment, submitting a letter of, of interest, which I believe is the application part of that, is filed under vacancy notices.
Resignation, I should have said, it should have been vacancies, interview, and resignation.
So it seemed to me that the, we have a title, vacancies, application, and interviews, and then under that, we have three different sections.
Well, under C, Roman numeral four, person seeking appointment or reappointment should submit, um, a signed letter of interest. I mean, we could call that, change the, the semantics for that, either they both say application, or both say, in the title too, letter of interest, but it, it does refer to, that would be an application, wouldn't it?
It is. And it's, it's, to me, it was confusing to have a, a main title, vacancies, applications, and interview process, and then have that three-title section, that three-noun section broken up into three different nouns, and then if you're looking for the application part, it's under the vacancy part.
So, I vacancies, interviews, and resignation process, and then have them separate. I think, I think when I put the application in there, that, that threw, threw you off for sure. I mean, I should have said, it should have matched the bullets down below, obviously, the, the title. So if it says, like here, vacancies, interviews, and resignation, and they got vacancy notices, interviews, and then the resignation's at the bottom.
Say that again, the original.
Yeah, I, I think I would agree with Tim, frankly, to take those subheadings out. I, I don't know, I, we're, we're giving them notice that this section has to do with vacancies, your application to them, the interview, it's the process, and, you know, if anyone is interested, it's spelled out there. I don't think they're, you know, they're only gonna want to look at the interview. I mean, you have to look at it as a whole, so I'm not sure that, I, I would agree that I think it's just more than we need to try to break up in subheadings, and...
Gone.
And I do agree, all of our dates, the first, should not be spelled out, it should be the number and ST.
Every date was, was done in a different format, so I just went to just numbers.
Yeah.
Could be.
But the, the main point here is changing the word resignation to the word vacancies, 'cause we have empty seats, because people die, or they, they are dismissed for misconduct, and then the same, uh, appointment procedure still applies for any vacancy, not just a resignation. And then, uh, in the next section on member conduct and removal, uh, in the first section, A, we said they are subject to removal by majority vote at the discretion of the select board, and then in a part below here, we say, uh, no, but PC members require unanimous vote.
That's by, that's by, that's per statute.
Right, so we need to not say PC and D, and DRB members are subject to removal by majority vote. I just crossed it out and said vote of the select board, see below, and then below, PR, PC members, it has to be unanimous, DRB members, it's a majority. And Mitch, I think you'll have a lot better chance if you see my document later, instead of trying to...
Yeah.
Collect all this now. And then the one other substantive change, I, no, a couple others. Oh, in section two, A2, excessive recusal from PC or DRB meetings and hearings is expected that a PC or DRB member not incur recusals more than 35% of the time. That's kind of an important not that's missing.
And I have a, a point of translation on that. It would be helpful, you know, your, your regular meeting schedule is 26 meetings a year, so that, that translates into 5.2 meetings. So if you, if you are excusing yourself, or you don't show up for more than five meetings without any really decent excuse, then that's, I don't know if it's helpful to have five of 26 in there, or, and similarly, down below would be nine of 26 meetings.
The, for, oh, you're talking about...
Just translating percentage.
Well, the meetings, percentage, and recusal is by agam on the agenda. You could have five hearings in a night.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry, sorry, sorry.
You don't know how many you're gonna have.
Yeah, you can't do that.
So, the not, I agree with...
Actually, how do you track that, though?
Oh, do you track that?
It's all in the minutes.
And then, uh, in the next...
By agenda item, then, Mitch?
Well, it's by hearing. You accuse yourself from a hearing.
But, but, but wait a minute.
Then we should be talking public, 30%, 35% of public hearings?
Yeah, I don't think you, you haven't defined that.
I don't think you need a number. I mean, if it becomes an issue, it becomes an issue, and it's pretty obvious.
Right.
If you need to get numbers, then you go back to the minutes and get the numbers to approve it.
Yep.
And like I said, it's pretty much what we're doing today. I tried to write it down, and, uh, get these updates in there and give it another shot.
And then, uh, uh, bullet B of that section, if a PC or, and now it's C, DB...
Yeah, I just added that, RB, we need that.
Yeah, RB. Uh, members attendance or recusals becomes an issue, the town administrator and the PC or DRB chairperson shall review minutes of the past 12 months and report to the select board. I added, chairperson or other PC or DRB member as appropriate, in case it's the chair that we're having the problem with.
Mm-hmm. Oh, that's a good, good point.
Designee.
And I believe the rest are just style points, which you can...
EP.
Take or leave as you like.
The town reports are usually always due December 1. For AMB, and that's for the auditors.
Whoa, I'm sorry.
Oh. Where is that, Margie?
That's Sub B of the last section E.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, right, that is, it's December 1, yep.
Instead of December 31st?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so, between Mitch and Tim, you'll clean it up and add those changes, and we can put it on the agenda for our first, well, first meeting in December? We have other meetings. If we did that at our regular meeting, we have a, yep, that would be the second.
Yep.
Okay. All right, does that work for everyone? Mitch, Tim?
C.
Okay, thank you very much for all your work on that, both of you. Okay, thank you very much for all your work on that, both of you. Town Garage Project Status Report. We, the committee met last week and really worked on our, again, our sort of informational campaign. And we're working on a letter from the committee. The board, Tim, has been, has drafted some language for the select board to consider. There will be a letter that will be going into the banner. There's a lot of folks that are, have expressed interest in signing such a letter of support for the garage. So we'll put that in. Those, all of those notices will be going out, you know, within the next week, so. Folks, your absentee ballots, if you need one, Judy Stratton is very happy to send them out. The ballots are available. Anyone can, if you're not going to be available to vote on the 3rd, you can come into town hall now and vote. As we have been saying, you can call any one of the, certainly, select board members or garage committee members if you have questions. Dan, I don't know if you can scan that camera just over. This is a sample illustration of a, of a project that the committee visited up in Swanton. It's based on that project that we revised a lot of our figures to bring the project, total project cost under $1 million. That includes a six bay garage, sand and salt shed enough to hold really a season's worth of, of sand and salt mixed. An access road, over 1,000 foot access road at the, adjacent to the current transfer station. That's the municipally owned property where the site has been identified. And a well, septic system. You know, there have been some questions that have come up from the community as we've been out and about. Some things, people have sort of misunderstandings. One of the questions that has come up to me a number of times has been, boy, it's, it's down the hill from a landfill. So what can that mean in terms of drinking water? The facilities committee, actually years ago, worked on that, on that question. We have gotten rulings from the state. We've had analyses done of the water quality, which actually has not had a hit in that area at all. And all of our engineering analysis shows actually improving water quality. Having said that, the state told us that worst case scenario, if we ever had a situation down there where the water was not potable, we could go to a bubbler. Now, I know that's what TAM uses at their site. It's actually what we have right over there, here in Cole Hall, which is where people drink their water. So that would be the only issue that could arise. It's not a problem for washing trucks. Actually, it's not at all a problem right now anyway. So that was one of the issues that was brought up. And again, some people thought that the total figure was just for a garage. Again, it is not. It's for a, a large salt shed to keep the sand and salt undercover, which is, I don't know that it is an actual mandate at this point from the state, but they're getting very close to it. And again, all of the site work involved on that project. So we're really hopeful people can support it. The longer we wait, the more costly it's going to be. We know that, we know that for a fact. Interest rates are rising, construction costs are rising. And, you know, this really seems the time to do it. We, as a, as a committee, are not recommending that the town put money into that, the current garage, because of the condition of it. And it really does not fit the needs. So rather than, you know, putting more money into a, a facility that frankly just doesn't meet the town's needs, doesn't seem an efficient use of the town's money. So, you know, we've done as much work as we know how to do. And we're just hoping that people will come out and support on December 3rd. Anything else to add, folks?
Yeah, I do. This is a letter to the editor that I'm going to be facting to them tonight. After much soul searching and consulting with members of the Shasberry and S V S U board and Rich Pembroke of the administration of the district, I have some disturbing facts. Due to cuts in federal funds, there is likely to be an eight to 10 cent increase in school tax rates for the Miami 3 budgets. This is before any contract talks and possible impact of, of any said contact on tax rates. There are also possible tax rates coming from the Shasberry School. If the bond vote for the school passes, the town of Shasberry is stuck with payments on that bond for 20 years regardless of any other expenses. The world will not stop if this bond does not pass. If previous boards had seen fit to have a sinking fund for garage replacement, there would be no problem now. This problem did not appear overnight. If the bond vote passes, the interest on that note will be $400,000 over the term of that bond. Would that $400,000 not be spent, better spent for town needs? The town currently has seven loans or leases on trucks or equipment. I believe as these come, become paid, we should set up sinking funds for replacement, save the interest on them. Therefore, I must recommend to the voters of the Shasberry that they not approve the bond vote for the garage. I feel that the taxpayers are taxed to the limit and can afford no more.
I, I'd like to respond to that, Ken.
Go ahead.
You made a comment in there, and I don't know if it's incorrect. You said the bond vote for the school? What, what bond vote for the school are you talking about?
I'm talking about the bond vote for the garage.
Okay, you might want, you might want to correct that.
I, I have had, I have had contact with the various board members and Rich Pembroke. And all I can see is everything to do with the schools is going up.
Okay, number one, our job at this table, we are not school board members.
I know that.
We don't have a school budget that I'm aware of at this point. I don't know what they're doing with their budget. I do know, having sat on this board for almost 10 years, that for the last five years, we have not put this project before the town because we have been very mindful of the economic environment. We have worked feverishly to keep the municipal budget either static or, in fact, this year, the municipal budget went down. And we did that because we were mindful of the situation with the school. But it, we reached a point where we had to say, you know what? We've been talking about this town garage for over a decade that we needed it. And at some point, we have to pony up. And, you know, we can, we can nickel and dime things as long as we want, but that building will not continue to stand. And we're putting good money after good money and it's not holding up. You know, you talk about a $400,000 interest payment over 20 years. And you make reference to the fact that the town should have set up a sinking fund for the garage. Yes, the town should have, but the town didn't. You told me at one point the town should have done it after that garage was built. That garage is almost 45 years old. We can't, we can't, we can't change the fact that previous boards didn't do that, Ken. So if you, just as an example, okay, if we started setting aside money, if the town approved this bond, then our highest year of payments on that bond for 20 years, the very highest year, would be around $84,000 with the bond and the interest payment. The last year, it would be $50 some thousand. Now, what you're proposing is setting aside enough money for when, okay? So if we're trying to raise $100,000 in 10 years, if you're saying somehow we can piece that thing together for the next 10 years and hope to God that the, that the roof doesn't cave in while, number one, we've, God forbid, got guys in there. Or number two, have equipment that's, you know, well in excess of a million dollar equipment we have in this town. So if, if for the next 10 years, we put $100,000 aside, which is $15,000 more than this bond would be requiring, in 10 years, we'll end up with a million dollars, which is exactly the amount of money we could have next May or whenever it is we go out for that money. So in 10 years, if the town says, yes, we'll put $100,000 into the budget, which is going to increase their taxes more for the next 10 years than this bond will, then you've got a million dollars in 10 years. And if you think that in 10 years, you're going to be able to build the same building at the same cost, then I'm not quite sure what world you're living in. Because it's not the one we're living in now. Because interest rates are going up, construction costs are going up almost as we speak. And, you know, this is, this is a project that the intent was to keep as much of it in this community as possible. You came onto this, onto this garage committee saying, and you said it to the public, that we need a new town garage. I do not dispute that we need a new town garage, said Ken Harrington. But it's too big. You need to take out the maintenance bay, you need to take out this, you need to take out that. This committee did that, Ken. We fore, what we have foregone on this project and saved a half a million dollars, we've saved the average taxpayer $9 a year over the million and a half dollar project, okay? We have lost meeting space so that we could take DRB and planning commission meetings and even this meeting and have it down at a new facility, that's gone. We've taken out a designated maintenance bay, we've taken out space for storage. All of those things have been taken out. And to your credit, a lot of that was driven by you. And now, at the very last minute, you announced this about an hour before last Wednesday's garage committee meeting, that you had spoken with Mr. Johnson and whoever else, Fran Kenny, and I don't know whoever else you've spoken to on the schools. We have had nothing come to us from the schools. But you have your own piece of information that the, the school is going through a budget process and the taxes are going to go up. So, you know, I, I think it's really unfortunate. I think it does a tremendous disservice to this town to say, well, I'm sorry, but things don't look so good for the schools. So yet again, we have to put off, you know, the, the town project. I just, I, I think for, for committee members that have worked for, not just this committee, that has worked tirelessly since March, and you know it, because you've been at almost all of the meetings. We have taken trips to garage after garage after garage. We have had free work done by engineers. We haven't paid anything. We determined that we were not going to spend money on new engineering plans. We were going to do it all ourselves. And we came up with a plan that is common sense, that is simplified, that we believe can be, can really meet the needs of what this town requires. And I, I'm just, I am frankly, I'm flabbergasted that without any consultation with your committee members, but obviously some sort of side stories from the school with no budget that we're looking at. You know, we, I have heard from school board members, we have increased numbers at the school, which means that we will have more funding coming to the school as a result of that. But all of a sudden now, you know, we've got this crises on the school side. And once again, the municipal side, which has not raised taxes this year and has kept a very level funded program. And in fact, yes, we do have surpluses. Why do we have surpluses? Because we have watched every single penny that gets spent. You talk about leases on town equipment. Why do you think we did that, Ken? Because it didn't make any sense to go to the taxpayers and say, okay, you know what? Let's put all this money aside when we're looking at interest rates that were less than 2%. It's almost, Ken, to, to be struggling with equipment that had high maintenance costs and looking at our interest rates and realizing to pay the interest rates on a, on a five year lease purchase program was going to cost us less money than holding on to a truck for the next five years while we try to build up a reserve fund.
I'm not saying that.
Well, you mentioned the leases.
Are you telling me there's no interest on that loan?
I said, the interest, we have, Ken, you are very new to the board. One of the things that we talked about earlier in this year was as interest rates rose, we would begin to revise the lease purchase planning. The reason we went to lease purchase was because it was such cheap money, if you will.
Is it cheaper than no interest at all?
It's, you know what? It's cheaper than, than putting the money into repairing vehicles to make them hold on for another four years while you try to get the money from the people.
I'm not saying that, Karen, and you know it.
You are, you just.
I am not.
Ken, you talked about seven or something or other, you were talking about the lease purchases. You were trying to make it sound as though we are somehow in some great debt, which we are not. We are putting the same amount into our lease purchase programs as we put into the reserve funds.
Is there, is there interest on that lease? Are you paying interest on that lease?
Yes, a very low interest rate.
All right, is that better than having no interest at all?
It's better than having to pay more on the repairs of existing vehicles that we cannot replace until we get enough in the reserve fund, yes. It's cheaper than that.
I think the point we're talking about here is the garage. And there's a lot of sub-issues to that too. And everyone is entitled to their opinion. Ken, me, Karen, all of us. I think I speak for the remainder of the board that we all support this bond because the town needs it. I would also suggest that when considering what you want to do, I'm speaking to the town, in terms of voting, there's no disagreement that the garage is inadequate. I believe Ken agrees with that. There's no disagreement that the information that you just heard from Ken was not discussed with anyone outside of Ken and whomever he spoke to. There's no disagreement that this committee of garage committee, including Ken, worked hopefully in good faith for a year in response to concerns that the town had, including Ken, and that those issues were addressed one by one and overcome. I would suggest that one must consider the source of any information you get in making any important decision. The source of the information you're hearing from the majority of this board is the decision to go forward with the bond to build a garage is in the best interest of the town. The information I believe that the town just heard from Ken Harrington is based on whatever Ken Harrington believes he heard in a closed meeting that I certainly. whatever Ken Harrington believes he heard in a closed meeting that I certainly wasn't party to, that Ken didn't share with me before I just heard him give his speech, that I know for a fact he did not share with any members of the board. With that, everybody has to make a decision, what they want to do. I know what decision I would make when I have to make an important decision for myself, my family, for my town. It's not based on information that's gotten from someplace that I know nothing about from conversation that I only have one person's interpretation of. I would encourage the town to vote for this bond without reservation.
Mitch, Tim, do you want to add anything?
I think it's not the, the town garage is necessary. If anyone disputes that, they should come look at the current town garage. We've had it open numerous times. I think the rates are favorable and they aren't going to be favorable for, for much longer. It's something that's necessary, and I think we should move forward with it. I'm voting yes for it.
I certainly support, support the town garage proposal. I, I supported the original proposal. I sometimes feel like I'm the only person who voted for it, but I did, and I voted proudly for it, and I still stand by that vote. And I reiterate what Karen said, that by going back to the table to renegotiate this project down to a smaller project, we cut a third of the project, five hundred thousand dollars. We gave up the pole barn to protect the big equipment from the weather. We gave up the maintenance bay to make repairs easier for the crew. And I can't remember the other big thing right off the bat that, that we gave up, but all of those things, I felt like in the long term, we're going to save this money. Oh, the other thing, we're two bays on the garage for growth. We continually seem to expect more out of our, our road crew, and we want this building to last for seventy years. So the original proposal, which made it a little bit bigger than what we need today, seemed to make sense for something that was going to last us for sixty years, seventy years. And because of, as she said, rising interest rates, rising costs, by cutting all those things out, which in the long term would save us money, we have saved the average taxpayer a whopping nine dollars a year because of the, what we lost to interest rates. And if we delay this further, we can expect, I think, similarly disappointing savings for many further cuts that we, we make to the garage. I would guess that I would go on to say that Ken is certainly entitled to disagree with building a garage. And I think that the reason that so many of us, including myself, are upset to hear this now is that, at least I came to the table on the garage committee feeling like Ken Harrington represented a significant part of the community that did vote for the garage. And that by having Ken Harrington at the table and having, hearing what he wanted cut and what, how big the project he needed it to be was an important part on, toward getting it into size and into a project that the town could support. And again, I say I was for the original project, and I still say it would have saved the town money in the long run. But now we're at a million dollars, and we've given up those things. I thought, because they were what Ken Harrington wanted us, wanted us to do. Ken Harrington and the people that he represents wanted us to do. I'm really disappointed to see Ken turn his back on the project to, to, to take away his support from, for the project at this late date. Because I feel like if we had had, if we were, knew we were not going to have Ken Harrington support earlier on in this process, we would be at a different stage in this process. I still hope the town supports it, and I still think Ken is entitled to his opinion. I, I think our anger at him has a lot to do with the fact that he does represent a lot of people who potentially could bring this project down, and I hope they don't. But I also, and I agree with Karen that a rumor about what the school board budget is going to be is not a reason to change our minds on this project.
It's not a rumor, Tim. The numbers that I got were directly from the, Rick Pembroke. He said that eight-to-ten cent number is a fact. There's no question about it. It's not a rumor. And all I'm saying is, people are coming to me saying they can't pay their taxes. And once we sign this, if this thing passes, once you got it, it's like having a mortgage. You're stuck with it for twenty years. I think there's ways, we've got a million-and-a-half dollars worth of equipment sitting out there, a good portion of it, doesn't need to be replaced tomorrow. And there's ways that we can find money to do this without a loan.
How? How, Ken? How, how can we find-
By starting, by starting a sinking fund for one.
Okay. And so how long do you anticipate? Again, if you're looking at a million-dollar project and you've seen the numbers, you know, you know what we have to spend, and that's today, that's not ten years from now.
I understand that, Karen, but there's, there's ways, there's ways to cut anything.
Ken, how much, how much do you have to tax the people starting next year's budget-
That's a very good question. How much can the people pay in this town? Is that just that garage?
Well, but, 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 that's right, but-
When, when I said, when I said put a new roof on that garage out there and build a five thousand, a five thousand-square-foot garage at the landfill, what happened to that? Nothing.
Why aren't you at the school meeting? Why aren't you at the school meeting? That's where your taxes are going, Ken. Not, we have to run the town. We just heard the school can't pay fifteen thousand dollars towards a generator. So guess what? Why do you think I was asking Larry about the generator? Because I am looking for every penny that we can get in this little municipal budget of ours to run this town. Because why? Everybody looks at us. They look at this select board and say, if we have a crisis and we need to use that as a shelter, where's the money? But who's the first? So we put fifteen thousand dollars in our budget, okay? That's a lot of money in our budget. That's a lot of money that could go towards, frankly, fifteen thousand would take care of all of this room that we're sitting in right now. We have been putting that, trying to, you know, piece together a little bit each year to put in enough to paint Coal Hall, okay? Fifteen thousand, just like that, goes for the generator because, no, the school doesn't have the money, and no, it's really town business, it's a town responsibility. Well, so is the garage, very much our responsibility, and it's nothing that's going to turn on the lights at the school, okay? But it's going to get people's roads plowed. It's going to allow those trucks to, to get the sand and the salt right there where they need it. And, and, you know, for us to try to set aside enough money in a reasonable amount of time to do it all on our own, you're, you're going to be putting, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars every single year into a reserve fund. Do you think the community can do that? No. We tried to come up with a plan, Ken, that kept our municipal rate stable. And frankly, just because we are taking on a bond doesn't necessarily have to mean that our municipal tax rate is going to go up. And again, I'm saying municipal, not the school, because that's not my job. That's their job, to keep that school rate stable. But we can-
What happened to spring?
We look at the budget and we say, okay, if the town passes this bond, here's an expense line item, okay? And then are there areas we can cut back so that we can mitigate any increase? So when we say to the community that this is going to cost you, if you have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, if the grand list never changed, which it, it does, it goes up pretty much every year, if the grand list never changed and you voted for this project and you have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, the average impact over that twenty years yearly out of your taxes, what you would be paying is thirty-seven dollars on this project, if you have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home. That doesn't mean necessarily your taxes are going to go up thirty-seven dollars, because if the grand list goes up, then correspondingly, the tax rate is going to come down. So, you know, i-it's just, I think it's, really does a disservice, again, to, to say, we can, well, we'll just put it off and we'll figure out another way to pay for it where we're not paying interest. Well, the only other way to pay for it is to go to the taxpayers and say, give us some more money. We're, we're, and continue to put money into that place over there where, you know, it just doesn't make any sense. It just doesn't make any sense to me. But, you know, you've talked, you've talked to people, and it's interesting that, you know, I haven't seen a thing in the banner about school taxes going up. I didn't even know that-
Well, it was in the, it was in the red letter here outside.
I, I didn't know they'd even really come up with a budget for the schools. You've already finished your budget process?
No, we're in the budget process, Karen, as you all know.
Okay. No, I didn't, well, no, I have not heard, I have heard nothing. So, you know, I mean, we're just beginning our budget process here at this table.
Well, where, where was, where was the select board when I proposed saving them a hundred thousand dollars on that new excavator out there that they had to have?
Ken, you know what? You're going to, you're going to, you're going to-
We spent a million dollars at this table in one night.
You can, you can put numbers out and say, this is what we would save if we did this, and, you know, we've been down that road with the town garage. I mean, you know, you make assumptions that something can be done for a certain amount and-
I'm expressing-
We've done the hard work to determine, in many cases, that's not the-
My thoughts and the people that put me on this board.
Well, that's, okay.
And-
Well, perhaps you should have discussed your thoughts also with the board if you'll discuss them with other people, too.
Because these facts that I found-
I don't consider facts hearsay. It's what you're saying, you heard, I wasn't there.
When I hear numbers from, from board members, Carl, on school boards, that the numbers-
Then go to the school board, Ken. You're the wrong board.
I, I never knew these facts until this last weekend, Carl.
These are not facts. This is hearsay. This is what you had with the conversation. I didn't attend.
When, when the director of the, of the, of the S V S U tells me that that eight-to-ten cent is a fact.
I don't know what he told you. I don't know what he told you.
I know what he told me.
I'm hearing what you, I'm hearing what you heard. I don't know what he said here.
Maybe, maybe you ought to be speaking to people, Ken, and asking them to go to the school committee meetings and tell them to keep the taxes down. We've, we've, that's exactly what we have done. We have worked very hard at doing just that. And, and, you know, people seem to be getting the impression that their taxes are going up because of us. It's not because of us. It is not because of us. And I think it is very unfair to give that impression to the community. Please, folks, if you want to know what's going on and why your taxes may be going up the way Ken is describing it, go to the school board meetings. There's S V S U meetings monthly, they have finance committee meetings. Larry, when does your school board meet?
The second Wednesday of every month.
Second Wednesday of every month down here at the Shaftesbury School. So, you know, that's where, I hope you're there, Ken. You're so interested and concerned about the school tax rate, I would assume that you would be at all of these school committee meetings now, because you are a select board member, and you ought to be, frankly, working for your municipal budget and municipal needs.
So was the information you heard at one of these meetings, Ken?
I was, uh, there was a-
Was it at one of the meetings?
There was a legislative breakfast this morning.
Now, was it one of the, the meetings of the school board that you heard this information? You're telling people they should base their decision on?
I heard it from school board members.
Oh, so you weren't at the meeting? This is a one-on-one conversation?
They didn't know most of this stuff till this weekend, until-
So it wasn't at a meeting?
Well, Karen, the legislative breakfast was this morning.
I see.
And that's where it was stated that the rate was going up from the state.
Was it public discussion you had?
That was at the legislative meeting this morning.
You know, again, Ken, I just, I have to say, are we, are we now, it seems to me as though your thought process is, you know, whatever is happening at the school is going to determine what we're going to be doing here at this table.
Does the school taxes have more effect on the property of taxes than anybody, anything else?
Yes, yes.
Sure. Substantive, I mean.
Of course it does. It's eight, it's at least eighty percent of your tax bill.
Absolutely. So should, should we not be concerned with what's going on at the schools, then?
Of course we should. We've been concerned for the last five years. That was the point that I made initially, Ken. But how long can we have our hands tied because of that, when we have infrastructure that's practically collapsing on us? You know, that does no service at all to the community. You talk about the fact that the town should have been forward-thinking. Of course the town should have been forward-thinking and setting money aside, but they didn't. And, and we can't go back twenty years and start it all over again. You know, we're, we're trying even, you know, that's why with equipment replacement, that was the reason for the lease purchase, because we didn't want to be in a situation where it all started collapsing at the same time, and we were pouring money into maintenance costs on, on vehicles.
Well, I can tell you, I understand that, Karen, but you don't have to buy one every year. You spread it out. What you need to find-
Well, we, we were in a hole, Ken. We were in a real hole. You look at the, you look at the budgets up until about six years ago, and you start looking at the reserve funds. Guess what? They weren't funded. They just stopped funding reserve funds because, oh, well, that was a good way to try to keep the tax rate low. That doesn't do a service to the community. You know, if you can keep a stable tax rate, you're much better off to do it that way and not, you know, have folks get hit when everything starts to collapse. And guess what? Well, don't you remember, you know, we kept your tax rate low? Because frankly, you know, right now, we've worked really hard to keep the tax rate low and to also think forward, continue to fund the reserve funds that we need and, you know, take care of the needs of this municipality outside of the school, along with still funding some things that are beneficial to the school. You know, we, we have, we've worked very well with the schools. It's the whole sidewalk project, this corner, a lot of that has been a partnership with the school. And I'm just, I, I find it very disheartening, very disheartening, knowing that there has been some sort of a, a push, even from some of our current school board members, that we should not go forward with a bond project for the municipality because, because of the school, to try to make things a little bit easier on the school's side. I find it very disturbing. But you know what? I, I, I think we've, I think we've discussed, I think we've discussed, yes, it is. Yes, it is, and I hope they take-
And I, and I don't think that would have passed if I'd never said a word.
I, I, I don't, I don't know even what to say to that. Margie, Shaftesbury Transfer Station, contaminated used oil. Do we want to discuss that tonight? Is that-
You, I gave you the, pretty much, an update in your packet.
Sounds like we dodged a bullet there.
Yeah. We dodged a big bullet, and I'm still waiting for the second estimate from N Pro. And then, because it, it looks like we're, we're going to be out at least five to seven thousand dollars. But I do have a quandary, and it doesn't, we don't have to belabor the point here, in that is how we would get the tank out of the concrete bunker. That is no small task. So we need to work on that aspect of it. So I'm, I'm almost back with the idea, and we can talk about this once we see the numbers, whether or not we just pump now and then dispose the tank later. The only drawback about doing that is that you're paying for mobilization costs twice for these haulers.
We don't have any way to strap onto that tank and pull it out of that cement bunker?
Well, we're going to have to, it's been like that in that bunker for years, and so we're going to have to somehow-
You're suggesting yanking it with the stuff in it?
No, drain it. Get the roof up and off.
I thought you were talking about draining it first.
So we have to take a look at that.
We have to drain it first anyways.
They have to pump it out.
Pump it out, and then once it's pumped out, we're going to dismantle that whole facility anyway. We're going to take- anyway. You're going to take the roof off in a matter of...
We could, yeah. We're definitely going to need the road crew to participate in that.
That'd be...
Yeah.
Are you, are you sure? I mean, I'm, I'm thinking if, if the concern is that the tank was potentially contaminated, then, and, and when it's going to be drained, when it's yanked out, the RECRA rules might, well, tell us how we have to pull out, too, which could be pretty expensive. I don't think it's just a matter of digging it out, is it?
Well, I can't answer a technical question like that, but I, no, I think we're out from under RECRA.
We're out from under it.
We're out from under it. It's just TSCA.
Right.
That, that's right. Your email said TSCA.
So, and... And then going forward, Margie.
Going forward, I have, not there. I do have, there is a used oil recycler, Crystal Clean, that I have found out about through a number of channels. And so, they're an option for setting up a used oil collection program. It could be very simple. It needs to be supervised, it needs to occur, let's say, at users, whatever is the most common sense, let's say on Saturdays. But that's really not the issue tonight, how to plan ahead to, to manage a used oil program. We just know that there's no way we can have an unsupervised drop-off location going forward. So, I'm hoping that by our next meeting, that I'll have heard from NPRO, and I will have pictures sent to the folks that are bidding, so that they can see how encased this tank is, for some guidance. And the state also knows. And can give some guidance there.
So, you're hoping by our December 2nd meeting, you might have something more to report on this?
Yeah.
Okay, for sure. All right. Bill, I apologize. We've gone way, way, way over. We've scheduled you for 8 o'clock, and again, my apologies, Bill Fisk, Treasurer.
I get the doctor's office. Do you just have to sit in there?
We have our year-to-dates, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I believe you all have a copy of the four-month year-to-date Activity Statement Budget Status Report for the General Fund. Basically, going through this, the major categories, I'll hit on those. Tax revenue is, this is an approximate figure, it'll be...
I'm sorry, before you go on, which of the...
Yeah, I've got a bunch of sheets. Which one?
It's the one that says 1 of 10.
Actually, no. I'm on the, I'm on the General Fund, Current Year, Period Four.
I've got three attachments here. I'm just trying to figure which one to...
I've got a batch, my, my computer says batch number, so I'm...
It says GF...
Isn't it this one, Bill? That's the 1 of 10?
Balance sheet, GF, October 2013 PDF.
Yes, yes. It starts with the balance sheet, and then underneath that is the budget.
You're right. Okay. I've, I ran mine as of the 17th, so, yesterday, so it may be, they should be the same. I don't, I don't, I didn't make any additional adjustments. So, we're looking at, the first major item is the tax revenue, and that has essentially, current taxes have come in. We will be adjusting this figure for the amount that goes into delinquency. There is a provision made in this number here, so that there'll be some adjusting of that in the month of November that we're in right now. In addition to that, we're getting additional payment from the state for the, based on the last pre-bait payments that were paid to us on November 1st. And there'll be some additional delinquent tax interests during the month. Intergovernmental revenues, we've had two, two quarters of Vermont State Highway Aid. We've received the Forests and Parks and the state pilot. We still have the, the land use and the federal pilot outstanding. Our charges for services, we're, you know, we're about a third of the way through the year, and we've collected approximately 37% of our, our budget of revenue in that. Licenses, nothing's come in yet, but dog licenses come later in the year. The fines and forfeitures, you can see before you, we've had no state police fines, and sheriff's fines are about $1,100. So, we're a little below budget on that. Interest income, and this is where we are right now. This number will increase because we now have approximately $4 million in cash, a little more than that. Some of that will go to the school, a good portion of it will go to the school. But our income will, interest income will increase. As far as Howard Park is concerned, you can see...
Bill, excuse me, I'm sorry for interrupting, but right under interest income, you've got sale of equipment?
Yes.
Is that, what is that? Is, is that supposed to be there?
Yes.
Okay.
We have, we've sold a couple of pieces of equipment.
Okay. Two trucks. Okay, okay. Thank you.
And that's where that's showing up, just to bring that to your attention. Howard Park is, you know, about $455 spent against a budget of $2,500, but we're in the, kind of the slack season of that. Cemetery revenue, about 860 against a budget of 6,900. Some of this will, will change as funds flow in from the trustees and as the year goes on. Other income, the employee health share is there, it's 33% of the annual budget, so that's right on track. We don't take operating transfers in until later in the year. And so, right, and I would point out to you, too, that we also have $120,000 of the prior year fund balance being included. So, our total revenues at this point, $1,370 versus a budget of $1,854 at that line. And on the expense side, if you go down through the first major category of administration, about 52% of budget at this point, but it's important to look at, for example, the insurance and bond premium is all paid, so that, as we, we said last time I was here, that's a front-end load that changes that average a bit. The town administrators are about 34%. You can down, look down the percentages, and they are, they are running approximately a third where they should be, in any event. Coal haul expenses, again, we've got, we've got 40, about 43%, but we've got an oil pre-buy in there, too.
So, there's no more, that won't increase anymore.
So, our oil is, is basically where it is on the budget. The rest of them are approximately where they should be in terms of a third of the year has gone by. The town clerk has spent about 28% of our annual budget. You can look down through the various categories there, they all seem to be tracking well. Finance, running about 40% of budget at this point for bookkeeping services and payroll services. Payroll's right on track at 33. The auditing is, is at this point below budget and will increase with the, the town report, when that, when that comes in, and the auditor's spend more time on that. Delinquent tax collection, that's a, that's a difficult budget item in that, you know, it's basically coming out of the, the delinquent tax, taxpayers' payments. So, we budgeted 1,800. We've, we've actually had about 1,000 so far. Some of those supplies won't be, for example, repeated. So, we're, we're reasonably good on that. Treasurers on track where it should be at this point in the budget cycle. The listers are at about 28% of budget. You can see the major categories. I, you know, I see that the lister's salary is below budget, the, the professional services are a little bit higher, but again, that's because we've just gone through the tax billing cycle. So, total government's at this point, with the explanations that I've given, are it's about 43% of budget. On public safety, you know, we're about 22% because of the way we, we get billed. Emergency management, about 7%. The fire department's at 36%. And heating fuel's in there as well. The, let's see, going down through, nothing in the ward and law enforcement, we're about 35% at this, excuse me, 17%, 17.8%. Total public safety's 28% of budget right now. Public works, we're at about 30, 29% for highway administration. Highway construction is at about 16% of budget. Highway equipment maintenance is at about 32% of budget. The garage is at 39%, but again, the fuel charge is in there, too. The solid waste facility is at 23% of budget. Streetlights are right at 33. Park has expenditures that are about 58% of budget at this point, including an equipment maintenance charge in there that is, is moving that around a bit, that percentage a bit. Cemetery expenditures, 29% of budget. So, our total public works are about 25% of budget at this point in the year, a third of the way through the year. The Development Review Board is showing about a 14% of budget at this point. Planning is at 23% of budget. Combined, they're at about 20% of budget. Community appropriations won't get funded until around the end of the year. The county tax has been paid. Debt service expenditures, they're all in the beginning of the year. You can see that where expenditure is a little bit slightly less than budget, and we paid about 99.4% of our budget for that. We'll make our reserve transfers later in the fiscal year as well, at the end of the year. So, we are, at this point in time, we have an excess of $687,000 in revenue over expenditures, but we have received our income, and we're going to live on, on all of that for the rest of the fiscal year. So, we won't end up with $687,000, but it looks good. Our balance sheet, we have, this is as of October 31st, so we have $1,400,000 in cash at that point, because of tax collections. We're now over $4 million in cash. A little bit of petty cash, a little bit of a receivable, and then the big taxes receivable figure. We have some delinquent taxes still outstanding from last year, and the inter-fund balances, which are principally the municipal grants, Fund 310 and the water department in that number. On the liability side, there's, there's minor amounts there, little accounts payable. We drew $200,000 of our $400,000 line of credit, and that's all we've drawn, and that's all we will draw in that. That deferred revenue item represents the amount of revenue that's estimated to be uncollectible as of October 31st. That number's going to change as we now know where we are with the, the November collections. And we owe the schools approximately $3.56 million for the education taxes we've collected on behalf of the school, and we owe the trustees $702.50. So, we started the year, fiscal year, with a fund balance of $390,000, and right now, our fund balance is $1,076. And as I said, if we run true to form, if we run according to budget, we will end the year with approximately $270,000 in our fund balance. So, I don't know if you have any questions. I plan to come back. I don't know if I'll have November statements for your December 2nd meeting, but I'll certainly have them for the second meeting in December.
Does anyone have any questions for Bill?
I just have a quick comment on the appropriations. I think you've got the Shaftesbury Garden Club and the Historical Society mixed up.
Okay, I'll check on that.
Yeah, this is a, one's...
I'll take a look at that. Thank you. Did I shortchange the Historical Society?
Yeah, yeah. I think that's right, because the garden club hadn't been asking for money, we've just been...
That should have been, okay.
In Coal Hall, the pair of meetings.
Yeah. Right. But the, the $2,500 should be down for the Historical Society. Mitch is right on that.
Okay, thank you. I'll correct that and change the account title. And, okay. Anything else?
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Very, very helpful, as always.
Nice to know where we're going. Pardon? Nice to know where we're going.
And where we've been.
Yeah, where we've been, yeah.
I guess I skipped over the replacement of the copier scanner. I apologize for that. We have a problem with, we have had a problem, been having a problem with the copier.
Well, the lease is expiring.
Yeah. It's a good thing.
So, yeah, we, no, we have no budget at the moment to replace this machine. I've been operating under the premise that we would actually be renewing a lease, but in the vein of interest in what cost to out, purchase outright, I, I ask for those numbers as well. I have two vendors that have been talking with us, and they're, apparently, these new Ricoh copiers are the, are the ones that both of them are recommending, and I, we looked at the one at the school and thought it was very impressive, and they are, they swear by it. It's a heavier-duty machine than what we would need. MSK Engineering has a smaller color printer that they actually purchased, and they thought it's been doing great. It does have some issues at the end of the day and drops from the network, and nobody can figure why. But, anyway, we are presently at about 35 copies a minute, and the gray, the two lines in the middle of the little spreadsheet are really, that, that's the machine that I think we're interested in. It's, it's a little fewer copies a minute, we won't even notice the difference.
And it's... Wait, Margie, sorry. Just, just so you can define, where are we now? Do we have our current, oh, current lease, we're paying $117.50 a month?
We pay $117.50 a month, $570 a year in maintenance, and that's at...
Okay.
Estimated at 60,000 copies a year.
And was this a five-year lease we had on the current one?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we, we copy at 35 pages a minute.
Okay.
And so...
You're looking at the 3352s SP?
Yeah, that's 33 pages a minute.
Okay. All right.
The one down below that Linda Wall quoted us on was, it's a faster machine, and that's what the school has, but I don't think we need to jump up another $30 a month in our lease expense. I just didn't see what the benefit would be. The machine that we have downstairs is suitable, but we need. So, I'm, I'm down to looking at the actual, the Ricoh 3352, and both the vendors use, say they're using competitive pricing. I tell you, I, in my discussions with the proposers, I found one to be much more literate in IT speak, and I, I just think that this, the Wall proposal, it, it seems $10 more a month, and she did say, I called, I said, "Look, you're not as competitive as another proposer. Could you come down a little bit on your lease monthly costs?" And she said, "Well, maybe another $2 a month." So, that would be a difference in $8 a month, but I, I just have, they're the incumbent, their repairman is here within 24 hours, and sometimes same day. He knows the machines. She is, I think she's excellent, and makes a very good case for the features of the machine. She can train precisely, and this is not to say that the, the other bidder couldn't do the same. do the same. I just have far less experience in working with that person.
Where are they both located?
Locally.
Both local.
Mm-hmm. But time is of the essence, because the lease is about to expire, and we need to make arrangements to get this lease, this copier shipped back, and that's actually another point about the Wall proposals, that that hundred-and-fourteen a month also includes shipping back our, our current machine, so it's about a three or four-hundred-dollar transportation cost, and-
So, so we have no budget for this right now?
Not to outright purchase.
So, so if we lease-purchased, um-
It's just lease we're talking about?
We, well, lease, yes, excuse me. We don't own it at the end of it, right, Margie?
That's right, they take it away.
Not, not that we want, you know, such a machine after five years.
These machines have a, have a shelf life of about five years.
It's dead.
And, and they really do not have much market value at the end.
So either we keep the, we keep it fairly static in terms of what we're putting out now, and Ken, to some of your concerns, over the course of five years, every year would be spending an extra two-hundred dollars in order to not put out fifty-eight-hundred-seventy-five dollars, it's not budgeted right now, so-
But isn't there somewhere in, can't we transfer on something like this? Is there no way, or you've got a fund balance or surplus in one account, you can't switch over to this one?
And buy the thing outright?
We're not, well, you, you could agree to overspend the line.
You'd have to overspend, and you'd have to hope that your budget, I mean, Bill just told us, you know-
Well, I mean, all I'm saying, and what people get me, get, get to me, Karen, is they look over here and they see a million and a half dollars worth of equipment sitting out there, and, and they, you know, they, it's just like you or me, and you got your own budget. If you go out and you, you want to buy something, you go out and you save up for it, and maybe you have to wait a little longer sometimes than you, you normally would.
Well, that's, that's, that's-
And that's what people are expressive to me. I mean, I, granted, I'm throwing it back to the school, and, and granted, this is only stuff, because I didn't even know this stuff till over the weekend about the school stuff. This is what people are coming to me with, and, and I'm trying to reflect that back to this board, and that's what put me on this board.
Okay, well, right now, we're talking about a copier.
Now, I understand that, but I'm saying, all I'm saying is, you're talking a thousand dollars more money here if you lease this thing.
Over five years.
Over five years than if you buy it.
That's right.
And maybe it's only two-hundred dollars a year, but if you do that over the whole thing, eventually, you're going to start saving money, big money.
I hear Ken's point. My question is, if we buy the machine, we have to maintain it, right?
No, well, we have to, no, the service contract, they could still do the service contract.
But that's more money.
That's more money.
Well, we're still, we're paying that anyway, we're paying, that, that's a given, even if we're leasing it.
It's five-hundred year, five-hundred eighty dollars.
Oh, the lease plus service contract.
Yes, yes.
Oh, so the question is, do we want to purchase it and then pay the, the, the maintenance contract? And that, that doesn't swallow up the savings that we get by buying it?
Well, again, I, 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 I'm assuming that the maintenance contract is the same amount, whether you purchase the machine outright or lease. I'm, I'm assuming.
Yes.
I don't know that that's a fact.
It, it, it is.
Okay, so, so that's-
Four-hundred-and-twenty dollars a year.
Yeah.
Or-
So if we, if we take fifty-eight-hundred dollars, you know, which, over the course of the year, is going to be about, what, forty-eight, forty-five-hundred dollars more than we're spending now, because we wouldn't be leasing at thirteen-hundred a year, and we've got a few months gone already, we have to take it from somewhere else. We have to take it from somewhere else, because it is not in the budget to fund that kind of a purchase.
Is there a disposal fee after five, five years to get rid of it?
I, I don't know.
There is a transportation charge to get it out of here, it's, say, three to four-hundred dollars.
Now, we don't incur that if we lease it, because they do that as all part of the lease, but if we buy it, we have to cart it in and get rid of it.
No, that is, it's rolled into a lease, there's a, there's a cost, no matter what.
Yeah, as part of the lease, that's all part of the lease, but if we buy it-
He's asking, is it part of the purchase price? Once-
No.
No, it's not part of the purchase price, so-
That's correct.
Right. Now, do you know what the warranty is on this? Is it a five-year warranty?
Five-year.
It is a five-year warranty.
What, what is the lease period, five years?
Five years, yes.
And if something goes wrong with that, I mean, we'd have a maintenance contract, but-
You won't see this until next week.
Yeah, stuff like this is sometimes better to lease.
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
Yeah, I would move that we leased, from Wall, the, the RICO thirty-three fifty-two at about the same price that we're paying now. Things are working. I don't see a, a big advantage to buying.
I'm, I'm not up for, for, for that kind of mess, neither, when you're talking about these types of things, you just don't know.
Margie, are you looking for a motion now?
Yes.
Would you like a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I just made one.
Right, we just need a second.
You got it, yeah? I'll second.
So you have made a motion that we go forward with a five-year lease program on the RICO thirty-three fifty-two S P?
Yes.
By Wall?
By Wall.
As proposed by Wall.
Yep, as proposed by Wall.
At the price of a hundred-and-twelve dollars?
Hundred-and-fourteen dollars.
You said to take off two dollars.
She was, she was going to take two off, okay, okay. All right, is there any, are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yep.
One. Okay. Um, what did I do with my agenda, Margie? Do the agenda, I don't know where I-
Yes.
Next thing is town, town administrators' report.
Oh, here we go, yeah, town administrators, there we go.
The biggest item that I'm coming up against is this flurry of new information from the League of Cities and Towns and Blue Cross Blue Shield about all the options that we have now to enroll. And I just wanted to get a pulse beat of the board. Blue Cross Blue Shield has, their, their safety procedure, safety net, is that if they don't hear from their organizations or their, whoever's covered, in time to affect the January one enrollment, what they're going to do is roll, roll everybody into a new plan that's basically on the exchange that they think is equivalent to ours. Now, interestingly enough, they think it's the silver, one of the silver plans. But, anyway, that's one option. The other is just to keep continuing existing coverage through March thirty-first, that, we had heard that a while ago was a possibility. And, and third, of course, is that we proceed to enroll in the exchange, but we do it directly through the carrier, because the League of Cities and Towns said the exchange website is still not working. And so that if we have, if I have a reading that, you know, eighty, most everybody's going to be migrating to one plan, we can enroll in the exchange plan directly through the carrier with really a blink of an eye. Hardly even an enrollment form needs to be sent in. But my big question was whether or not the board was entertaining any idea of allowing existing coverage to continue through the first quarter of next year, and I've been assuming no, because we've budgeted or will be budgeting for the current plan, whatever plans are being selected by employees.
What happened to what we voted on? Is that not possible to go forward?
Oh, no, it was very possible. This is just different ways to enroll.
These are additional options.
Yeah, yeah.
Why, why wouldn't we want to go forward with what we've already discussed ad nauseam for some time?
Well, we are, we will.
Okay.
It's just, I will not be enrolling in the, in the exchange. I think the goal is going to be to see if we can enroll directly with the carrier.
Okay. The reason, I think you said that we might not do what we voted on and talked ad nauseam about is because of the dysfunction of the, the website, that what we plan to do might be hard to do because the website's not working.
And so they have all, the enrolling of all these safety nets that are coming out. So-
So we would do what we voted on, but directly with the carrier?
Well, the first, the first was that, oh, because the exchange isn't working, now you have until March thirty-first to enroll.
Well, let me go back.
That was the very first change.
We could do, we could enroll directly with the carrier with the program that we have already agreed on.
Mm-hmm.
That's possible.
Yeah, no, but the big one, the, the first change that came along was that what they would do is allow existing policies to continue and that you, through the first quarter of next year, so that, to make sure that everybody had time to enroll on the exchange.
But if you do that, what happens?
And I don't, I mean, I'm not even mentioning that.
Do they carry over deductibles, then?
I know, that, there'd have to be this reconciliation phase, and it just seems much harder.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I, my preference would be that we do what we-
Oh, yeah, we're just staying on target.
How much more can we talk about?
Yeah, and, and if we, if we can get this, you know, in place with the carrier by December fifteenth, our folks can have cards January first.
Right, exactly.
Because we're not, we're not talking about a change in substance, we're talking about a change in procedure.
That's right.
Right.
That's right, yeah. I think we're just going to stay the course, you know, I think some of the employees are very concerned about all the other news about the Affordable Care Act, and what if, what if the decision is reversed on the Affordable Care Act, how is that going to affect our coverages? And I, you know, I just have to tell people that's an issue for the state of Vermont, it's not, and we're not going to lose our coverage.
No, you're, they're not going to lose their coverage, no. There will always be insurance. There will always be insurance.
Yeah, and apart from that, I'm working on budget, obviously, and, excuse me, the U.S. law situation. Anybody have any questions about anything? Tim had a great suggestion about making life more efficient for distribution of board packets, so I can't wait to work with Tim on that.
Right, I thought that was a really good suggestion.
Yeah, I started to feel for you, break, trying to figure out how many pieces of the packet you can send in this email.
One email. It is, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, I've never used one of those, but I know they exist, I think it should be easy, and I think what you get is a folder on your, on your desktop that says Dropbox.
Yes, like Dropbox.
And then you just put in the meeting packet into the, you know, you open up Dropbox and put it in there, and then we, we all have one on our desktop, and we can just pull the stuff down without you having-
Does everybody have an ID, is that how you get into the folder?
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into it more, but I suspect we'll all have a Dropbox account, and Margie will share her folder with all of us, and that's where we'll get our meeting packets.
So we don't need high-speed, I mean, you know, because I, we don't have, like, some of you have really speedy computers?
If you can get it through email, you'll get it this way, it's the same amount of stuff, it's just makes it easier for her to distribute.
Okay.
It's better there's not a place on the website we could go, even, on our websites.
Yeah, we had talked about that as a possibility of some future, someday.
That's another way to do it.
Right, because even, even then, the community can access.
Yeah, it'd be great for them to access it.
I mean, there's no reason they shouldn't be able to access-
What our agendas and our packet.
The stuff that we're, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It could very well be that the Dropbox has a, you know, a public part of it. You know, having it, you know, a shared folder on a server here is another way to do it, it might be a better way to do it, I was just thinking this was-
Well, we do, we have the public folder. What I, I mean, that's another thing I could do, is park the whole packet on the, on the, on the server here, and then everybody could pull it up while you're here. You wouldn't be able to access it from home.
No, we need to be able to do it from home.
You won't have RDP access.
Can you put it in the website for a meeting packet, ex, you know, we have all our, all our minutes and stuff like that.
I'll talk to Jen about that, yeah.
I think that would be, very good.
Yeah.
You go to the thing, okay, what's today's date?
Yeah.
And then, then you go backwards and see what's in there out there for-
Mm-hmm. Margie, could you also check with, with her, I'm not quite sure how this is all working in terms of the minutes, but it was one of our-
They're so hard to find.
Garage committee members who mentioned that the December third vote wasn't even on there, on the calendar, on, you know, if you go to the website, and, and it was, it was defined as a special meeting, when indeed, that's the vote, and the informational meeting's the night before. He also mentioned that minutes aren't available since, they are now?
They're all off.
Okay, okay. Okay. And, you know, I don't know if this is on there, our, all of our budget meetings, I think, you know, we ought to get that on there, so that wants to come to any of our budget workshops, you know, is, is aware of what's coming up when.
Yeah, I, maybe we should, ought to have a workshop with this woman at some point, yeah. Because I, I'm not fully cognizant of what it is we can get on there-
Mm-hmm.
-in the way of additional material other than what she's got, has written code for.
Mm-hmm.
So, this is important-
Yeah.
-to find out.
Yeah.
That's, that's, I was away to other business, never mind, go ahead.
Anything else, Margie?
Nothing.
Okay, Tim, do you have any other business? Mitch?
I was just going to ask, what is the, do we have any policies for updating the websites, or we just call out yourself and-
No, we don't. We really don't, and it was just another one of those tasks that landed in, you know, it's in, in my bucket, and I've, I'm going to try to hand some of this over to the woman that's coming on, is helping a couple hours a week.
I mean, do they do, they do, obviously, there's a set backups, daily backup, or weekly backup, or monthly backups in, on the server now, would, I would think.
Oh, gosh, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it'd be nice if we had a cer, certain person, he saw something that needed to be updated.
That's right, that's what I'm asking her to do.
Right, exactly, exactly. What's the process, what's the process for that?
This has been on for two months, it's no longer pertinent, you take it off.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just thinking about that, and then, if we can get this packet, you know, meeting packet-
Yeah, I think that's very valuable. Beautiful, little portal or whatever it is.
Yep, yep.
That'd be good.
Yep.
That's good for me.
Anything else, Mitch? Ken?
That Vermont State Police Community Advisory Board thing there.
Yeah.
Is there special scheduled meetings for that or something, or, because I've called Lieutenant Trea twice to find out, you know, about, talking to him about some of that stuff, and he never got back to me.
It may take a week for him to get back to you.
Yeah, I called him once last week, once this week.
You have, do you have-
I mean, it's probably got better, you know, more important.
Send, can his email, send Reg.
I'll send Reg an email.
Margie will send him an email and find out, Ken.
Yeah, because I, you know, one time he was out in his car.
Yeah, as I remember, they, they, because I went to one of those meetings, whenever it was, a year ago, and then they stopped. I think it, they were trying to do it quarterly, so, you know, it's not as though they'd be having them monthly, but Margie will find out for you.
Okay, and I, I told you about the speeding down Cleveland Avenue?
Yes, I'll just ask patrols again.
Yes, Chad, yeah, should have mentioned it to Chad.
I, I, I did call it.
They were patrolling right here.
Yeah, yeah, so, so he's alerted to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Carl?
No.
Anything? And I don't think I have anything. Okay, other than to remind folks, let's see, because it's not on, not on the website, we will, I'll be asking for, our next meeting, next week, Monday, the twenty-fifth, is a special budget workshop meeting at five o'clock. Anyone is welcome, but we will be meeting at five, and we have highway expenses and revenues we'll be talking about.
That's next Monday, is it?
That's next Monday, and we can either brown-bag it or order a pizza or something for dinner, so we can work through dinner, if that works for people. Now, I would like, I would need a motion to go into executive session to discuss a, a real estate proposal, I'll say, there's a little piece of property that's potentially on the market.
Don't move.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Dan.